Video?
Video.
Captions?
Captions.
We're good?
We're good to go.
I make a motion to call the meeting to order. Is there a second?
I second.
Go ahead, call please.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Limpier?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin?
Aye.
Okay, is there anybody who has a conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding the items on the agenda this evening?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
Let me think about this.
Who's thinking for that?
No problem.
I don't.
I'll err on the side of full disclosure at about a month or six weeks ago, I did have a conversation with one of the applicants this evening, so I want to disclose that to the board that I had a, or just a general conversation.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty.
It's nice to hear that our trustees are talking to constituents.
Want more information?
No, no, that's good.
Okay.
I'm just going to give a short version. If you're participating through Zoom, please put your questions either in Q and A or raise your hand. I do not need to read the chat, so you won't be hold on through that. If you're here as well, you can come to the podium, please give your name and address. The same goes for chat, and it's all be nice to each other and have a great meeting.
Okay. So with that being said, is there anyone who wants to make a public comment? Around the agenda. Anybody online? Just a check there?
Nope.
Okay. First up, Treasurers' Report?
Okay, you see the boys are here tonight. So everybody received the bill page, they got it yesterday. Is there any questions or concerns? You know the way we review the bills?
Yeah.
Now if I can have approval for that.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bill page as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead, call please.
Trustee Lightkin?
Aye.
Trustee Limpier?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, the next thing I include, we just got notification, it was timely regarding our first sales tax of this budget year. It's coming in as expected, so so far the numbers are looking good. So if we get three more just like this, we should make our anticipated revenue. So I'm not going to call it yet, it's way too soon.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to have the number.
Just keep sending everybody.
Yeah. Please spend, spend often, and help friends too.
Exactly, okay. What else from you?
Just real quick, because I ran into an issue. You should include me in your emails, just CC me in and I file them, because then if something comes from us, I can go back, because often someone will say, "Well, you know the email and I wasn't included, so I can't comment, because I didn't see things." It happened again with this packet, and you know, it was resolved, but just keep me in the loop. I mean, unless you're...
Yeah, and the clerk's, you know, it's a matter of record for the clerk, it's a legal, there's a legal element to her being copied in on things like that.
Not that you're looking for comment, but often I'll just take the email and put it into a folder, so I know what hit it. Nor if it's something board-related or a meeting-related, I can put it for the next meeting. So just CC me in.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
This is specific to agenda items, or...
Anything, actually, anything.
Actually, anything, anything if it's something administrative action, or you know...
But not general communication with the public?
No.
No, no, she's just talking about, you know, how we're running our business.
Yeah, because some things can be considered foible, and it's always nice if I'm included in, then I can just look back through emails and see what I was CCing in on this certain subject.
Okay.
And I can sort through my... I have a lot in my mail folders, trust me.
Yeah, it's a standard procedure for village clerks, as a matter of legal course here. Anything else on your report?
Just the village hall is starting to come back together. We still have some parts and pieces to get fully put in place, but everything's looking beautiful and quite well.
Yeah, thanks to you and Alexandria, we have to really hodgepodge everything. There's a lot of moving parts.
Moving a whole lot more than a home.
Oh, and thanks to Lily for taking care of the, little cleaning of the cushions back there. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well done.
Great.
Okay. Next up, the minutes?
Yes, we have four sets, believe, tonight.
Okay.
Actually, if I may comment ahead of time, Dorothea, I found, as I was reviewing things, quite a few issues. In fact, I've got about 35 type posts here, and to me, there were just several sections that weren't as clear as they usually are. Personally, for me to be in support of these, I'd like to see a new draft. I apologize for last-minute nature of this, but we just got them reviewed.
Yes, now, yes, that's why I sent them out to you guys on Friday. I've been having Alexandria helping with the minutes, and I gave them a cursory review, but I...
No need to name names or anything, I think it's just a matter of getting them in state.
So why don't we regroup, and then come back with this, okay? And you guys can coordinate?
Yep.
Okay, so let's, you know...
I have to do a hard copy of my corrections as well?
Okay.
Why don't you give me, if you can send them, or if you can wait, let me review them, and then I'll send them back out and see if they correct.
Yeah, for the first round.
Let me take a look at these.
Thank you.
Okay. Alrighty. Next up, non-municipal permits, the duck drop.
Yes.
They're dropping ducks again.
Can I ask again for clarification on the non-municipal permits? I know I had mentioned this before, as far as why this needs to come to our board, when it happens every year, and there's no changes. Is there anything else that we can do to have this reviewed by the...
Local law, so I have to bring...
Local law?
Yeah.
Or would have to take an action?
So to change the local law, our board?
Yeah.
And I went back to when I previously suggested to the board to change that. I can present something to the board, you know, if they want me to have it go to Jeff to review and tape, and I put something together.
Does that make sense? It gives Jeff some direction on this, because, you know, what, it's pretty straight-up stuff. So Jeff's coming, but he's not coming for a little bit, but we'll give him that direction.
Right. But it's something I have to...
Internally administrative.
Sure, that's great, thank you, Dorothea, I appreciate that.
Thanks for bringing that up again, because it's been, you know, we've talked about this.
We've got a whole board that needs to be do, and we're excited.
Okay, but we're still back with the ducks. So, nothing's changed, right?
No, it's standard fare, they'll provide the insurance and everything. They've been doing this for many, many years. They're 25, apparently, their 25th anniversary.
Yeah.
So everything's in place for them to continue to do this. It's going to be September 9th, so we would need to waive the 45-day waiver. We'll issue the 45 days.
Yeah, so we have their insurance, I think, on file, actually.
Right, they'll be, she's going to be sending it.
Oh, is everyone has, okay, look at the picture.
She noted.
Yeah, okay.
There's nothing materially different in this application than any prior.
So we could entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the duck drop as presented, and waive the 45 days.
No, it's good enough.
Thank you. I'll second the one.
Oh, and also with the receipt of the insurance, because she's still on. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Limpier?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Can I make a comment, please? I don't know if you saw the email, but they invited us at the 4 o'clock time, the trustees should be there when they drop the drop. Okay, the other thing I wanted to say is, it seems like we're always needing to bypass the 45-day. So is that also a law that can't be changed, because it...
We can look to amend that as well. If we amend the whole thing, we should amend it as well.
It's like, well, we're in there, let's take a look at it.
Yeah, by the time people think to give it to me, although I do have to say, though it's not for this meeting, the Habad gave me, give me their Christmas, or, no, it's not Christmas, I'm sorry, Hanukkah. So for their Hanukkah event, so...
Oh, wow, they're way ahead.
Yeah.
Okay. They're on their game.
It just doesn't seem like anybody else's, so that kind of rule seems to be diluted a lot, so let's see if they can amend that.
Yep.
My only comment on that would be that I like the efficiencies of having an insurance, but if something comes in that is uniquely different, right, that is new, where 30 days, for example, isn't sufficient to appropriately think it through, and you only have one meeting that they could take action, it would require special meetings, and to give the public and something that might be uniquely different and contentious, it gives them a little bit more time of thought. The waiver is a simple administrative task, and so we can, we're asking applicants 45 days in advance, we don't have to grant the waiver. So if there's something that is difficult for us to want to presume approval of, because of just how quickly it's been put together, or the lack of thought, I'd rather go the route of having the 45 days stay and just administratively clear it. It gives us a little bit more flexibility than if something comes in last minute that we have to do a special meeting, if it's just off-cycle, or if it requires additional thought, we're reaching out to additional constituents or interested parties.
So thinking that through, if we direct Jeff to take a look at, you know, sort of the regular administering of the duck drops, that kind of thing, then the 45-day waiver, you know, that's the piece that maybe we wouldn't have to include, you know.
Reoccurring that.
You're right, but for the new applications that would come before this board, that are not the routine ones, I hear what you're saying, and I think that's a good thought.
And I think the ones that are recurring, it seems like 45 days should be fine, they know well enough ahead to get it in. If they don't, then I think our board's the only one that could grant the waiver, or the board that's hearing it, which would be possibly the planning board. Somebody's still going to have to...
But if Jeff's directed to rewrite the law, he can factor in a different timeframe for something that is a regular, that's all I'm saying. We're parsing it in a different way, something new that comes to the board, okay, 45 days, something that's a regular event?
Right.
Not so much. That's why I'm thinking, it's a good, I'm liking your line of thought, you know?
I think if it's a brand-new application, it should go in front of whichever...
Definitely, definitely.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Okay. Next up, the Pittsburgh-Sutherland Homecoming Parade.
Yes, this is also a yearly event, and we won't need a 45-day waiver. It's for October 7th, it's on Saturday, and they start and end at Sutherland High School. They've provided their insurance, and nothing's changed as previous years.
I'll make a motion.
I have a couple things to do.
That's okay. Recall us speaking about debris pickup or trash pickup from the...
Bring that up.
Okay, so what's the...
I think that was part of the same conditions that they've been given in the past.
Yeah, because, well, no, not always, because the, it wasn't homecoming, it was maybe a different parade. There was, there were streamers left in trees and confetti everywhere that was glitter. That's not good for wildlife, for birds.
Yeah, I remember that event, and we did talk to them after this.
Okay, so I just want to make sure it's still in there.
I can re, make sure it's very clear, no glitter, no...
Yeah, because now I guess when they throw confetti, it's like, you know, dried flowers or something that can be compounded.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Okay, I will make that very clear with them.
Okay.
Does it say what time that parade starts? It says here in here. It's usually, sometimes 10, sometimes noon, does anybody know?
It should be in there.
Event date, location.
October 7th.
Starting and ending at Sutherland. Yeah, October 7th, what day, what time?
Time.
They're normally in the afternoon, I would say it's like 10, 11, like you said.
Like 10, 12, or 1, and I'm not sure which.
I can verify and send it.
So let's verify the time, part of the motion, that it's on the record.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so with that, with that condition, is there a motion?
I made a motion, can I second? Or I make a motion to approve that, to approve this, that I'm going to have the homecoming parades starting at Sutherland on October 7th. Time to be determined.
I'll second.
Go ahead, call please.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Limpier?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin?
Aye.
Motion passes. And the other one I sent you today was for the Habad, or their street fair. This is another one of the time determine, you're having phone call out to them. I think it was only supposed to be like a three-hour event on the street.
And it's similar to an event they had, I think, last year.
Yes.
You know, where they talked to all the neighbors, and they had a, I don't think they're having a parade, though.
They had a, well, it came a little bit later. They had the street blocked off.
Oh, no, I know they had the parade last year, but not for this event.
Oh, they're not doing it this year?
No.
It's just a street.
It's just a little street, street event.
They did a little procession, and then maybe a sidewalk.
Yes, because they were getting a tour.
Yeah, I think that was for the...
They had, they received a new tour. It's very exciting.
Right, yes.
So, so I'm sorry, so it's a little street fair that's going to be on the sidewalk or in the street?
In the street, they're closing.
And they're closing the street off, okay, just at one end, right where they are?
Yeah, they have the neighbors signed up.
Washington?
Yeah, I think the discussion was included.
It hasn't been...
Does it say time?
No, we don't have a time.
She just said she has to call in and just confirm the time.
My understanding from Steve, it was like a three-hour event.
So this is a new event, right?
I think they've had things down before. I don't think it's a brand-new, I think it's a continuation of something they've done pretty much on a yearly basis for like a neighbor get-together.
And that's everybody on the west side of Washington.
This is right the part, the dead ends.
But, yeah, but everybody is signed up.
Everybody signed up on that? Do we have a petition or a copy?
Yeah.
It's right there, I'm looking at it.
Yeah, it was late heading in till today.
Yeah, and Justin, you had a, you had a comment?
No, I do see the neighbors have, have signed this, which is great, and I also recall that they've come in, several of the neighbors have come in for past events, and have been very supportive, and I'm sure I'll call it once.
Yeah. Okay, is there a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the application as presented, and to waive the 45-day requirement.
Can I second?
Okay, trustee Lightkin?
Aye.
Trustee Limpier?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Marshall, did you speak?
Did he say, did we hear or not?
It's about to come, hang on, just a second. Shoot, where did I just have that? How many signatures are on that, by chance, if you could, man? Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and some of them are at the same address, but there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight unique addresses represented at least.
Eight out of 10, how many houses?
I think maybe nine, if you include one, so I...
Majority.
Okay.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay.
They're out.
Alrighty, so actually, we're waiting on Jeff to be coming shortly. Why don't we just talk about the electric bikes? I'm just going to skip up to that real quick.
Coming from Prismius, yeah.
Oh, he is? Oh, I didn't know, okay.
No, he's just...
Do you want to wait for Jeff, or?
Do you want to wait for Jeff, though?
For Prism?
That's okay, we're good. We're going to sort of combine it with Friends of the Arboretum, because, is Sam on the line?
Yes, he is. Can you hear us?
I can.
Hi, Sam, this is Mayor Plummer, how are you?
Hi, good, Mayor Plummer, how are you?
Fabulous. Thank you so much for joining us, and we're delighted as well, we have the Friends of the Arboretum, some representatives here tonight.
Wonderful.
Yeah, because they want to talk about what they've been doing in the Arboretum, and I know we, you know, been reaching out to you about doing the RFP.
Correct.
So, and I, you know, I should probably stop talking, because I know you and Dorothea have been working on this together, so maybe you want to pick up on that.
Sure, I reached out to Prism because putting an RFP together for invasive removal, to me, is a little bit out of my wheelhouse, so I sought the professionals, and Mr. Becca Anderson is the person to speak with. He is overseeing some of these projects, and I think he can make some recommendations from Arboretum. I think we're working together to get a walkthrough scheduled, so we can really lay out. I didn't want to hand you something that was copy-paste, because I don't think that's what's going to solve the problem with the Arboretum. We want to use our money wisely.
So the walkthrough is going to be done with you and Prism, and the Friends as well, together?
We haven't gotten it scheduled yet, so we can include members from the Friends that would like to join us.
I think that would be a good idea.
And Sam, do you want to just talk a little bit about what Prism does, because you do such good work?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Plummer, and thanks for, everybody for having me. The Partnership for Regional Invasive Species Management is a program that's operated at the, I'm at home now, I live in Penfield, so I'm, I use Pittsburgh, I'm just right down the road, but I work in Geneva at Hobart and William Smith Colleges. The Finger Lakes Prism is a program that's housed at the Finger Lakes Institute at the colleges. It's a non-faculty or non, it's an academic department of the colleges. The Prism focuses on leveraging resources broadly in our 17-county region amongst different stakeholders to focus and drive forward invasive species management broadly. So we're focused on everything from terrestrial insects and trees and plants, to aquatic fish and aquatic plants and things like that. Our region is essentially from the northwest, we, region is Monroe County, and then it goes over to Anadaga and Madison Counties in the northeast, and then straight down to the border of Pennsylvania. So we have a very large region, and only a limited number of full-time staff. So we're not necessarily out there, you know, trying to destroy all the invasive species, but we are trying to make connections and utilize the network that we have built over the years to sort of bring people together to focus on collective objectives and goals focused on, like I said, invasive species management.
Wow, that's a lot. Yeah. Well, why don't we do this? I was thinking, because you're on the agenda too, so do you want to talk about the work that you've been doing, and then Sam can hear that as well? That would be great, thank you.
Sue Julie, this is Monroe Avenue.
Sam, can you hear Sue Julie?
No, not really.
Okay, I'll try and speak up.
Would you like to sit closer?
You can sit right here.
You can come up here.
Yeah, perfect, there you go, Benny can hear you.
Dorothea.
Okay. We just wanted to share some recent things that we've been doing in the Arboretum, and the Friends think trustee Lightkin, because he came out and met with the Friends last week, and they walked the proposed new trails that have been recently preliminarily blazed, it's a mouthful. Justin Geo located those trails, providing an accurate base map of the Arboretum. I think you guys should have...
There's some copies for the public, too, if anybody would like to see. Come on up and grab it if you'd like to, trust me.
As you can see, the proposed, I'm sorry, on the phone, that you don't have the copy of that, but...
We'll send it to you.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, so you can see it.
Okay. As you can see, the proposed new trails would open up new areas of the property for public's use and enjoyment. As proposed, they completely bypassed the village garage and yard, which is an important factor. The new trails eliminate the potential safety hazards, the safety concerns identified during past meetings. The trail connection to the Erie Canal towpath will provide a new visible public entrance to the property. A lot of people are saying they don't know where it is, they don't know how to get there. It will also eliminate the need to cut through the DPW parking area or yard, which I believe a lot of people do that currently. As you will know from the map, with the new trail connection in place, the Arboretum will have a complete trail network, allowing multiple walking loops throughout the property. These trails will allow views of different ecological environments present, the frog ponds, there's a stand of pines in there, providing visitors with a varied and interesting experience, which obviously is one of the goals. The Friends volunteer work parties this season have continued to weed the previously planted trees and shrubs planted in the spring of 2021. The dedicated volunteers have continued to pull out and cut Alanthus, smaller. As many of you are aware, the volunteers are planning an additional work session either Friday or Saturday this week, depending on the weather. As requested, we've submitted Alanthus remover, removal recommendations from knowledgeable agencies and resources. Have you received those? Lisa was not clear that you received those?
Nope.
I thought that I received and knew all about them.
Yeah, I got it right here, it looks like.
Did I miss it? Maybe I missed it.
Yes, because it came in 10:45?
Your email?
August 3rd, not 10:45, August 3rd.
I'm going to have to go back and look, because I missed it.
For some reason, I just saw this now, unless somebody just resented to me.
Maybe it was a resend, I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, we have followed and continue to follow those guidelines, the guidelines, and...
And we'll forward that to you, Sam, as well, so we can make sure we're all on the same page about, you know, the guidelines and things, because that'd be really great.
All right. In coming weeks, as DPW scheduling permits, it would be optimal to have the remaining small stumps from the trees that we have cut down removed. A lot of the stumps are still in the ground, so it would be important to pull those out, so that they don't continue to grow as next season approaches. It is believed that the removal can be completed by payloaders or backhoes. The recently cut Alanthus brush has been stacked in the gravel knotweed area, so it's out of the way until crews have time to remove it. As mentioned before, the additional cut, it's projected to be generated this Friday, will also be consolidated in an area that the DPW can remove by a later time. We complement the efforts this season by the DPW in mowing the meadow area. It's helped to keep down the spread or the new growth of new Alanthus tree seedlings. It would, it would be wonderful, wonderful if they could do one more seasonal mowing this year, just so that it keeps them down. If there are areas with spikes, it's assumed that string trimmers could be used effectively in controlling those conditions.
If you reach out to DPW and see if they'll do another?
We would do that, yeah.
Yeah, you can let us know.
Definitely.
And now Jim, Jim is going to update you on proposed future.
Thanks, Sue, thanks so much for your good work.
So, where we're getting to is, is the proposed trails are approved for permanent development. The first steps include addressing the poison ivy that's been identified along the new proposed routes. We're requesting permission to coordinate laying cardboard along the new trails. This process will smother the plants without the use of herbicide, and is a recommended sustainable practice. We're pleased to note, or, yeah, to note that Pittsburgh Farm Berry can make the cardboard available for this purpose. We believe that we can coordinate the installation of cardboard with our volunteers and groups to initiate the process of establishing those new trails for trustee's approval.
I'm going to interject, another great place for cardboard is towpath bike, because they're huge.
Nice and long.
Yeah, so you can cover a lot. I've used them.
The Friends of the Arboretum note Eagle Scout candidate David Van Genhoven is finishing details on his Bluebird projects that you have previously approved, and we understand David plans on installing those boxes in September. Hopefully he's in communication with you on that. Looking forward, the Friends have been in contact with scout representatives to schedule potential work parties this fall, and the Arboretum will be back on your agenda soon to finalize any requests as the details are scheduled as we come identified. Historically, scouts have been recognized for the impressive invasion of species mitigation accomplishments in our area, including work at both Spring Lake Park in Carrington, as well as Fire Park in East Rochester. We thank you for your continued support of the Arboretum's development. We also offer to lead a guide through the property for the members of the board. The walk would include proposed new trails, and then overview of the geological and ecological issues relevant to the development of the future generations of Pittsburgh and our surrounding communities.
Thank you. Could you give that to Dorothea?
Yes, I'll send her any...
Okay, thank you, oh, that's great. Thanks so much for that, that's, that's really great. Okay.
Just a, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Did the DPW receive how late can you dispose of the Alanthus?
I have no idea. We never received. I mean, I just know about.
Ask the question again, please.
The DPW, how they're going to dispose of the Alanthus that they're being asked to remove. Have they been given that?
Yeah, that came up at the last meeting.
Oh, they're, I'm just asking, because I know that's going to be a question Zach would ask. What are we to do with it?
Can you please silence your phone?
Okay, you guys remove the Alanthus. I assume there's a proper way of disposing of the Alanthus so we don't spread it. Am I right, mister?
Yeah, Sam, could you talk to that about, you know, the Alanthus that's pulled off? Because, you know, here we have, you know, this wonderful group of our volunteers in the Arboretum. And, you know, but there is the way to dispose properly of all of this. So maybe you could chime in on that for everybody.
Yeah, I'm trying to, just in my handbook here. I don't. I don't know that you need to be super careful about disposal. If you want to be extra careful, you can burn it. But otherwise, I think you should be able to just dispose of it how you would dispose of brush typically. I'm not seeing a lot of research here about, go ahead.
We wouldn't dry it or solarize it first a bit?
I mean, you could, yeah, I would probably.
You know.
Ultimately burning it, though, yeah.
But we're not gonna burn it, yeah.
I didn't know that.
We're not gonna burn it. But anyway. Yes.
The reason.
Name and address, please, for the record.
Seven Washington Avenue.
Thank you.
President of the Friends of the Arboretum and Arboretum and wildlife sanctuary. The reason we stacked the materials in the. In the gravel area that was the tarpaulin knotweed. And so that it can be stored there until the DPW has time to move it. We had done research, and unlike knotweed, Alanthus won't sprout from a branch or something left on the ground. So the hazard is not much different than, say, a box elder branch. It's not going to sprout up, so it can be disposed of like all the other branches taking.
In the seed pods. Yep. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Sure, maybe just a quick follow-up. I wanted to say, first of all, thank you to the Friends of the Arboretum and to Jim and Sue for presenting to us tonight. And for the volunteer work that has happened over there, taught about invasives and to map the trail. And blaze the trail. It was a pleasure to go back there and walk the trail with the group. It's a beautiful area. And I strongly support the efforts. I wanted to say that as an elected official, sometimes it's not clear what the right thing to do is. Fortunately, in other circumstances, we have things like the Conference of Plan. And in this case, we do have a two thousand nineteen Conference of Plan, which is kind of our guidebook about what to do. And on page seventy-three, as I was just flipping through it before the meeting, it does say, "Formalize and extend recreational trails in the northwest area and provide connections to the Erie Canal Trail and nearby neighborhoods." And that was in the plan for the northwest area. So supporting the creation of these trails, and specifically the one that we have in front of us on the map, is something that was specifically called out in the Conference of Plans. So I very much appreciate the efforts and I think it's a great plan. And I'd like to just echo the, that I believe that it is a step forward also in terms of addressing the safety and security issues we've talked about with the DPW. This is something where we've had apparently some issues with people going through the DPW utilized area. And the reason is to get back to the Arboretum from the canal. And this trail would give a safer way to access the Arboretum without going through the DPW. So I don't believe that it solves all of the issues of safety and security of the DPW, but I think that this is a big part of the puzzle. As I was looking at the map, there is, the southernmost portion of this does go through the Canal Corporation property. And I think that as we look to establish these trails, these new trails and to formalize them, that's a part of the overall picture that we do need to address in terms of permissions. So I know that the Canal Corporation has been great with some other projects. We've got some Eagle Scout projects and Pollinator Gardens that have been allowed in that space. I believe that we've gotten some approvals through for that. I would like to, as one step in the approval of these trails, try to move forward the discussion with the Canal Corporation to get approval for this particular section that we see in yellow in the southernmost portion.
Yeah, we can do that. And I love where the trail is. I think that really solves a lot of the issues with the DPW's security and safety for people coming through and dogs and kids. I'm already in touch with the Canal Corp, because we're already putting in our other applications. So I'll follow up on this. And I'll send this to them, just so they get an idea. They may need a little more specific information, but maybe we can also coordinate, I'm thinking with Scott Harder, our village engineer, who really probably has a little more detail. So we can potentially even add it on to what we're already asking them to do with the other land by DPW. So. Those are my thoughts. So thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that talking to them would be great in combination with the, I know we've got several items. That's a busy, I think the Canal Corporation is probably busy with requests about.
They know us.
Trails and gardens.
They know us.
And parking lots. Right?
They're all in.
One of those are there too. So a lot going on in that parcel. I guess that I also, you know, one, so this other request that we have with them for that area is that we have an existing parking lot that is utilizing part of their, as is already discussed several times. I don't know if we need to, I think these might be kind of separate requests. The usage of the, of the land for a trail to connect the canal trail to the Arboretum might be different than the lease that's required for a parking lot, for example. And I don't want one to get held up behind the other.
I was just saying, not to add it on necessarily to that application, but just keep the discussion going. And just saying this is something else we're looking at. In addition to everything else we're looking at.
Great.
Yeah.
So would you be able to, when would the next time that you're going to reach out to them be?
Well, I'm going on vacation for a few days.
Okay.
So it'll be next week.
Have a nice vacation.
Yeah, well, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, so if you could reach out to them next week, then just provide.
I'll shoot him an email, though, just to let him know. And I'll send him the map and just say, "This is something we really want to follow up."
Would you be able to CC me as well on that?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, if he has any questions, I'll make you the point person for the trails.
I appreciate that.
Okay, that would be great. Yeah, and I'll CC Scott Harder on it as well, so he's in the loop on that.
Thank you.
I have a couple of clarifying questions. Is this the entrance, what, the town park? Is that that town park where they put the bridge?
Yes.
Is that the entrance?
You can see.
Is that where they put the bridge and all that? Okay, right there. So it looks like the town park had that same kind of area, right, that we have here. They have it here, so they must have gone through the Canal Corp as well.
Yeah, they did a full plan. They did Seeker, Stormwater Review, LWRP, and full site plan. And also had worked with Canal Corp, so they did the whole.
Looks like that little piece is very similar to our little piece. I just want to say also, thank you. It's just so wonderful to be called Friends, because you truly are our friends. And it's great to see the village residents really being very passionate and so dedicated to this project so that everyone can enjoy it in their village. Thank you guys so much. A couple of the clarifying questions. So there was two, I think, requests from you. One of them was to get approval from us, I'm assuming, to lay cardboard on the trails to rid the poison ivy, right? That's something that we've got to approve formally, is that right?
Correct.
Don't leave me with that? Okay. Okay, so then we've got to have a motion there tonight for that?
Yeah, and also Sammy's still on the line?
Yep.
Hi, they want to put cardboard to suppress poison ivy. Are there any other thoughts on poison ivy from PRISM? About any other things that we could be doing, because it's so nasty?
No, I mean, I think if, especially if you're going, you know, non-herbicides, I think if that's, if that method is tried and true, I think then that's, I don't have any other info, no.
Yeah, it's a good starting point. And, you know, I wouldn't put a single layer. Yeah, it's nasty. I mean, yeah, because I've done it. I suppressed with four layers.
This year it's been hot.
I've got all the rain, you know, everything, right?
Two other clarifying questions. Do we need to make a motion to ask DPW to do one more additional mow for the?
No, that would be a direction from your man.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then last one is, I would appreciate a trail walk. I would love to do one of those. So I don't know how, who I would reach out to.
You can schedule with me. I'll be going, I'm going to Europe for two weeks.
Okay.
I'll be gone the last week of this month.
So am I.
And the first week of September.
Okay.
But how long, how can we?
You guys can sort that out.
Okay, so I'll just, I'll leave it. Okay, thank you.
We all know where you are.
We're hoping to work hard again.
This Friday's work party.
More Alanthus Friday.
What time? Oh, you don't know yet?
You guys can coordinate after.
Send me over time.
Okay.
I have a question for Sam.
Yeah.
So.
Sam, there's a question here from Marshall.
Yeah, Sam, Dave Marshall, trustee. You guys have a ton of resources specific to invasives. I mean, do you have anything that you might be able to send us? Either a PDF or links to resources that you use specific to controlling invasives that the Friends might use and use as a resource, maybe you already have. But it might be nice to just send it out to the trustees as well, specific to, I think, Alanthus and then the knotweed.
Right, well, it includes a whole, all the invasives, which is serious.
Yeah, so maybe just send a link to the guidebook you already have.
Can I put it in this chat, or do you want me to send in an email, or?
You can send it right to me, Sam.
Send it to Dorothea, please, and then she'll distribute it.
Yeah. Sure, yeah, we, I will say that we have, our website is chock full of information. We do have a specific document that we published a few years ago that pulls out probably thirty or so species and kind of gives all the different options for managing those invasive species. It also shows kind of like a seasonal plan. So basically, the best way to, the timing is everything when you're trying to manage an invasive species. You're trying to act on the species when they're most vulnerable. And that is essentially, requires understanding the phenology of the plant. So it kind of lays out each, what you should be doing each season. So I can provide the link for that. I will say that the, in terms of Alanthus specifically, we point people in the direct Penn State has kind of done the most on the specific Alanthus treatment. They kind of, I think, coined the hack and squirt method that is pretty common and what most people will go for when you're talking about reading full, full-sized stems. So I can, I can share some links to that as well.
That was one of the reasons why I had asked that question in review of the Penn State Tree of Heaven control strategies. One of them that they talk about is, there's a quote in a video there that says, "In fact, cutting the trees can make the situation worse as the trees respond by sending up dozens of stumps and sprouts and root suckers. Handpulling the young trees is most effective, but often impractical." There's a fairly significant video that I was wondering if, when you send that link in your body of work, you'll have a link to the Penn State site, or is that something that we would have to find separately?
I can, I can just send what I usually send to folks that are looking for Tree of Heaven info and feedback. So I'll send my links. I'll just send a list of links and that, yes, I will include, I think Penn State has like a main page talking about Tree of Heaven, so I can link to that and I can link to some. I think they've also put out some, like, specific, like, more focused PDFs, like, made for kind of, you know, away from computer work as well.
Yeah. And I guess this is questioned more to the board. I mean, we obviously have a group of residents in the Friends of the Arboretum who are dedicated to putting in time and labor on something that otherwise we may not have, the availability thereof through the DPW. So again, I commend you for that. Sam, are you and your department at PRISM a resource for them directly? Or do they have to work through the trustees as a conduit? Are you accessible for the public as well?
Yeah, I mean, we're a state-funded institution. So we're, or not the institution, but the program specifically is funded through the Department of Environmental Protection. So it's, we, you know, we're, yeah, I work for the public. That's basically who we're, who we work with. So I can say that I just wanted to sort of clarify, you know, in terms of what we can actually do. You know, we can't really, like, put together a, you know, a request for bid, not that anybody's asking to do that. Just want to make sure that that's out there. But I'm happy to advise in terms of what should go into a project like this. And kind of, depending on where you folks are now, I can sort of guide just basically like some broad strokes for what, what needs to be done next, I guess. But yeah, I think, feel free to reach out if people have any questions. You can reach out directly to me. I also have a program manager, you know, we have a terrestrial and aquatic program manager. So if I can't answer a question, one of our, you know, specialist program managers should be able to point you in the right direction.
So to the extent that this board may authorize work and the efforts on behalf of the residents in the Arboretum, they could very easily go out and reach out to you and do a walkthrough specific to the tasks that they're undertaking. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would be, are you asking me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be happy to go out and just meet with folks and take a look. And, yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to do that. We do that kind of thing pretty frequently with folks that are kind of focusing on these types of problems.
Thanks, Sam. And I suppose, Dorothea, you'll receive Sam's contact information, maybe when we get those links and you push it out.
She's been in contact.
We'll just push it out and make sure everybody has it.
That's why he's helping us with the RFP.
This is great. I really appreciate this.
And I've been in contact with him a couple of years ago.
These are the things that are not so.
Yeah, no, so this is all good stuff. This is where we need to go. Yeah, Justin.
Yeah, I just wanted to return to the cardboard. Everybody loves cardboard, it seems like. So I, you know, this, I don't want to mix this up too much with the trail issue, because it's still a proposed trail. So I don't want to, you know, say that we would be giving permission to place cardboard on the trail. But I think that cardboard makes sense as a form of suppression. I don't want any volunteers getting poison ivy. And so I would be willing to authorize the Friends of the Arboretum to place cardboard as a weed suppression method at their discretion. So that will be my motion, that the Friends of the Arboretum is able to place cardboard at their discretion for weed suppression.
I just wanted to clarify, we've thought about how to do this. So we wouldn't do the ends of the trail, because we don't want you to encourage people to walk on trails until they're ready and safe. And that way, they'd be less visible and less tempting for people to try to find them.
Thank you. Thanks, that's a good idea. I will second that motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second further discussion. Cardboard suppression, I'm all for it. I just suppressed my entire front lawn for the last few years. Yeah, we're going native.
Trustee right here?
Aye.
Trustee in here?
Aye.
Trustee co?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye. Okay.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, everybody. Okay, take care.
And I'll just say with Sam, you know, we'll get together.
You guys will connect. Sam, you'll connect with Dorothea over this, all of this as well. And thank you so much for joining us this evening. We really appreciate your input and also the support of this major project. I don't know if I had mentioned this to you, but two years ago, the Seneca's New Society went in and they did a preliminary sort of review of what is in there relative to invasives and natives. And they found it was about seventy percent invasives. So I think we have our work cut out, you know. Again, thanks, Sam.
Cheers. Thank you for having me, and I look forward to working with you all and let me know how I can help.
Okay, appreciate that. Have a good evening. Okay, and so Jeff's not here yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's here. Is he, did he just come in? Oh, okay. All righty. So he'll get settled here. I'm just waiting on Jeff to get himself settled here.
So just for the RFP for the invasive removal is going to take a little bit more, because we want to make sure we do it.
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts.
Yes, just not a cut and paste.
So just to clarify, those are, those are ARPA funds that we had tagged in the invasive removal, right?
Correct.
We're just trying to create the RFP.
Right, and to make sure I have everything that's needed, because even speaking to Sam, he indicated you want to make sure what area you're trying to cover, how you want to handle, so it's spelled out.
Right.
So.
Does that mean that the work has to stop until that's done?
Oh, no, no, no.
This, I think, is, there's bigger Alanthus that can't just be.
Exactly. That's really where we're going, is with the big stuff.
Okay.
You know.
I think the Friends of the Arboretum might have tagged some Alanthus trees, so, but it's pretty clear where they are.
You can't miss them.
Yeah, I think we just want to put together a solid RFP for services to make sure money as well.
Yeah, and also we have to document for, you know, for ARPA as well, so.
While we wait for Jeff, could we talk about electric bikes and scooters?
Let's talk about electric bikes. I know, I kind of, I know. Well, I kind of dumped a lot of information on you. I sort of, I'm sorry about that. But at least I can give you an idea of what's out there, what some of the issues have been. I was nearly hit by a kid on a scooter. I've been hit twice already with kids on bicycles. And I've spoken with, I had some neighbors contact me, they're concerned as well. So I thought, you know, we just need to kind of at least start talking about this. Other municipalities, I know some are taking measures. municipalities, I know some are taking measures, others aren't, you know, how, I don't know, you know, so this is why I just wanted in on the agenda to start the dialogue on this.
I think that this is a very, very important topic because it's a big safety concern, and now with all of the new, you know, not just the pedal assist, but the motorized, and I don't even think you'd call them bicycles, they're actually cycles.
E-bikes.
Yeah, e-bikes, but, but even the motorbikes that are, that are kind of like siphoned through now and being utilized, or being utilized on the canal, is, is significantly dangerous, and I don't know, you know, I did a little reading on what other communities have been doing, but it is a significant concern.
There's also, I had another neighbor contact me, there's, there's this whole trend now with some of the kids to go right into main arteries and pop wheelies on their bikes and film it for TikTok, and it is so dangerous, and I had a resident reach out, she said she nearly hit a young kid in front of the library, just going straight down State Street, doing, and, you know, she said they pulled, a car just pulled over, you know, and the kids love that because now it's filmed and it's on TikTok, so, and East Rochester evidently is having quite an issue with this as well, and it's tough, you know, by the time you, if you call the sheriff, they show that the bicyclist is gone, you know, how do you enforce that, so I agree, there's concerns, you know, I, I don't know that we have any solutions tonight, I think it's more just.
Enforcement is the issue.
Yeah, enforcement's the issue, one thing I, one thing I was thinking of, you know, we have on Chain Place where you are asked for signage to dismount your bike and walk it through the dense area there, you know, by Aladdin's and Lot 32, not all the bicyclists do it, but a lot of them do, at least there's that, and I was thinking minimally, maybe for Maine and part of state, you know, our commercial area up here that we do not allow bicycling on the sidewalks, that you dismount your bike, because people are coming out of shops and.
Or riding the bike path, right on the street.
Yeah, or do something, you know, where you're not blocking, it's different when you have the little kids on bikes.
Right.
Or tricycle, that's, you want them on the sidewalk, you want to make sure they're safe, but all this other stuff, I don't know, so I, you know, maybe we want to take a look at something like that.
So how much like, is it just signage, I mean, and how do you.
Do we start, well, maybe we start with that, I mean, at least it's a starting point.
Exactly.
And see what happens, I also was thinking, maybe, maybe in the spring, we could perhaps partner with Toepath Bike and have some sort of a bike safety program with kids, maybe they get a free bike belt, and they just really learn about etiquette, you know, that, you know, pedestrians are targets, you actually, they have the right of way before a bicyclist, you know, just basic bicycle etiquette, I've really seen, you know, kids just storming around and not even worrying about anybody else on the sidewalk, yes, Lilly.
Thank you, yeah, it's, I think a public discussion or a public meeting regarding the specific subject is because a lot of parents with their young children, even once they're passed off the strider bikes and on the next level, are not comfortable with their child riding in the street.
Well, they shouldn't be, a little.
So they want to be on the sidewalk.
Oh, yeah.
But at the same time, that can be problematic for pedestrians with the kids coming through on their bicycle.
Well, the little ones, not so much, because they're, they're all traveling at a certain level.
Ten, twelve, thirteen-year-olds.
Oh, well, those kids are speed demons, I've been hit twice by tweens.
Yeah.
I've been hit.
That sort of public conversation I'd like.
Yeah.
The other thing, as I've noted down in Shane's Alley, regarding bikes coming through there, and the signage on the, and building inspector has brought it to our attention as well, that they're not peening those signs, I'm wondering if we should consider changing the wordage on those to say pedestrian only, and being very specific that you cannot ride your bike through there, you just cannot between, between, let's say where.
Well, it does say walk.
Aladdin's is.
It does say walk bike.
Yeah, we have walk bike, and they're not walking their bikes.
Yeah, that's difficult, you know.
I don't know, I don't know.
Pedestrian only zone, I guess that's what I'm trying to point out.
So if you're looking at a ped only zone, we'd have to go through Canal Corp for that, it's their path, and they have a bike path down the whole system of the canal path, so, you know, we're sort of partners with them, I did meet with Peter Budd, our friend Peter Budd, who's an avid cyclist, he has a lot of good ideas about bike safety and what's needed, and we are going to pump up the signage, but we have to clear it again with Canal Corp.
Okay.
Because it has to be compatible with their signage throughout the system, you know, but you're right, I mean, the signage, maybe there is another way, no better wording?
Pedestrian only does include scooters, it kicks out scooters, right?
You could say no scooters, period.
Instead of saying walk bikes or no scooters, you could just say pedestrian only.
We don't know that we can do that.
Yeah, right, correct.
But if we ask for pedestrian only signage, at least it gives us the most flexibility.
We can ask them.
I don't, I don't think that that's going to make, when, when, yeah, it's going to, people are going to think, well, I'm a pedestrian, I'm just on a bike, so I think that, I don't think that that's going to make any difference more so than walk, walk your bike.
And again, it is a.
I think maybe if we put like something that's standing, it may be a little flasher, kind of like we do the run, you know, walk bike, like a flasher, literally.
Why don't I reach out to Canal Corp to the, because there's Canal, you know, there's actually people assigned to the canal path in our district, her name's Shelby, you know, I know her, so, and see if there's anything we can do.
That anybody else is aware of.
Because they have, this, we're not the only ones with this problem.
Right, and it's not, it's not just children, because, you know, I've been down there a lot, my cousins have been doing like the bike trips from Buffalo.
Yeah.
And those people, you know, there's like, you know, hundreds of them, and they're adults, and they come right through, right up to the pavilion on their bike.
Yeah.
Adults.
They do it a million times.
And they're all bikers.
And they do the cut up the path to the parking lot across from Girasole, which has been, they just fly up that path into that parking lot, and I just think someone's going to back out and hit them.
So I think it's got to work.
So there's a lot of issues.
What about punitive, what about fines?
By the courts, how do you enforce it?
Well, at least.
Who does it?
You may not necessarily need to enforce it, if you just put a, you know, penalty or fines enforced, or, you know, something like that, below the pedestrian only, then you may get thirty percent, twenty percent reduction, but it's, somebody's going to listen to a fine if you are telling them there's going to be one, whether or not it's actually enforced is another matter, you could potentially do the same thing with the pedestrian only or walk bike zone in the TDV up here, right, so if the TDV zone comes with a pedestrian only requirement, then only, you're more likely to keep people off bikes or scooters on the sidewalks if you have something that says fines enforced.
See, now I think the adults, if they see something in their face, they will, they will go to get off their bikes, I think that they just see that thing on the sidewalk, if they even see it, and they just ride past it.
In the riding or the stencil.
Yeah, I think that, but if they see something with a light that says, you know, must walk bike, I, I think they'll listen to that, I think it's the map, they just not, they don't pay attention to that.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm on board with a light yet, but.
So why don't we do this, I mean, at least we both get a discussion, I like your idea, you know, let's involve the community here if they do, you know, so just in terms of, you know, I don't think we have to belabor it, I think we're all in agreement, you know, it's an issue, so why don't I reach out to Canal Corp, let them know what we talked about, what other options are there available for signage, you know, with them, and let's, you know, and I can bring it back to the board, you know, then maybe we can move a little bit further along on that.
Okay.
Okay.
We could enhance the existing stencil too, I don't know how new the paint is at this point.
Well, actually, I repainted, it looks, it looks really good.
Yeah.
And it's in bright orange, just pretty.
I know, it is, it's pretty, yeah, it's pretty flashy right now, I mean, it wears, wears down, but, you know, it looks good now.
Right now, it's nice, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, all right, well, thanks, thanks for the discussion, everybody, okay, so, hi Jeff.
Hi Jeff.
Welcome, next up, petition for zoning change.
William R.
Come on up.
So, good evening, everybody, some of you I've had a chance to meet, I'm Mike Reynolds, my family owns the Five Stage Street property, currently occupied by Rachel's, you remember, may remember me from the La Fabbrica application from a few months ago, so we, as a family, decided to submit a petition requesting a rezoning or an additional overlay of our zoning to include the tavern overlay, the, the real genesis of it is that we are very intrigued about converting our parking lot into outdoor seating, I think the La Fabbrica application may decide to see what the value there is, and in order for us to do that and make a major investment, which we are considering doing as a family, we are considering doing as a future applicant, we see the best and likely use case to make that investment as a tavern, the concept of which we don't have yet defined, we're exploring a number of things and talked to a number of people, but rezoning is obviously the first step in us investing in design and application and putting ourselves out there for that process, so, and reviewing the comprehensive plan, I think a lot of the points that were made with that prior application about safety and parking, I think particularly the fact that our property is the only one, particularly in the downtown area, that has street-facing parking, and our building is not abutting sort of the, the actual street, it's unique, it's been that way for a very, very long time, we're very interested in, in changing that, and to make that kind of investment commitment, you know, a rezoning would be a first step for us to do that, so, I included a map in the application, so you can kind of see the adjacency for us to the existing tavern overlay, so it's, you know, just basically an extension across Stage Street to include our property, and yeah, happy to answer any questions and, and hear your feedback.
Why did you, why are you looking at a tavern and not like a restaurant or something?
I think that's on the table, but I think having the tavern overlay to start that kind of business, if it breaches the, sort of, I think it's a fifty percent revenue from alcohol sales, requires you to have a tavern overlay, and I think that as a revenue source is really critical, again, to make that investment and to attract that kind of clientele that would obviously allow us to utilize an outdoor seating area, so a tavern overlay based on our work and, you know, potential partners we've talked to is, is a necessity to run the type of operation that would be able to make that kind of investment.
Anything from the board?
So currently, there's no other property on that side of the street that's in the , in a tavern overlay district, right? Nothing on that side of the street, so your ask is to take a tiny little piece of land and make that the tavern overlay as compared to maybe looking down the future and being a little more comprehensive and including other people.
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking it about our property because I know it's something we want, I, we are, I think, a logical extension because we are immediately across the street from an existing operation that is in a tavern overlay that leverages the overlay designation, we also are not adjacent to any of the multi, the housing zones, if you go further down Stage Street to the east, behind that is the housing, so I think extending it sort of down the street may or may not make sense, I think our property is unique and sort of where it's situated, and particularly considering we are, would like to make a change to our parking, as I think the village has expressed our desire for us to do that as well, so I can't speak for the other property owners, I think for us to move forward as a first step to have rezoned would be great, and I, I look at it as just an extension of the existing, to the extent it's a future broader rezoning of more properties, then I think that's, that's, I would say that's probably your, your discretion.
Yeah, Lilly, I have a question for, for Jeff, Jeff, when the Villatries petition of this type, what are, what are the options for the board in consideration of a petition? Do we have options of how we deal with, with the, with the petition?
Well, ultimately, you have to decide whether you're going to deny or not, and if you're not going to deny, you have to send it to a public hearing, but you have the option to investigate what you want to do.
Thinking that.
I mean, is that, am I answering your question?
Yes, I, I, what I'm saying is that I assume there's a process for handling a petition of this type, because we're talking about.
Really, there's really not a great deal of procedure in the code.
Okay.
So it's either the language of the code says that you either deny or send it to a public hearing, for me, implicit in that phrase is the opportunity for the board to investigate and look and.
That would explain next question.
Whatever it wants to, what it needs to do to answer the question.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Reynolds, first of all, I want to say on behalf of myself and probably most Village residents, we're happy that you're trying to be creative in filling your storefront, because it is a big concern in villages that we, in the Village residents want storefronts filled, so we, I appreciate your kind of stepping out of the box to, to make that storefront more accessible to somebody to rent that space. My question is, is there an active litigation going on right now with your property, your net property?
Yes.
Okay, so my concern is to move forward in a way when there is active litigation going on, it just makes me uncomfortable, you know, that's, that's just a statement I want to make.
Okay.
Yeah, if I may, I, I just wanted to mention, first of all, thank you for, for coming in, and thank you for looking at our comprehensive plan, I, I think that's, you know, our, our guiding document, and a lot of people don't do that, so I appreciate you taking a look there, that's certainly one of our considerations as well, because all of the zoning laws that we adopt must be in accordance with the comprehensive plan, I, I did speak with our attorney earlier too, and, and he was very helpful in, in helping me to understand the, the process, and as he just described, we've received a petition, so we may move it forward to public hearing, we may deny it, we may send it to public hearing in an amended form, I did want to call the board's attention to something that the attorney also mentioned to me on the call, which is the review criteria for the Village Board Review, which would be section of code 210-37.4, and there are four criteria, eight criteria in there if I'm counting the letters correctly, and I, I believe that, as our attorney was suggesting, this does require some consideration, what I would propose is that we look at this, we all look at this in the September meeting, which is our, the next time that we convene, and in that meeting, we submit for the board's consideration the same materials, as well as a reference to 210-37.4, Dorothea, if you could include that, that code section so that we can be prepared to consider those criteria, and at that point, we can make a decision about how to proceed.
Yeah, Dave, did you want to weigh in?
Just a second.
Well, you know, I'll, I'll weigh in real quickly then, I agree, no, and, and again, thank you for, for coming in and, you know, and also for reading the comments like that, you know, I, I think there's a few moving parts here that, you know, I'm thinking we need to look at this a little more holistically as well, you know, we're looking at one property right here, you know, so I think we need a little more time to get information and bring it back in September, you know, so it's not a denial, it's like, hey, we just need to do a little more homework, you know, on our end too, so, yeah, is there a time? There's no time, okay.
Reasonable.
Okay.
Reasonable, always go, there's no time for it.
Jeff, did you have something else that you wanted?
I think trustee.
Yeah.
I was just going to jump in and say that I, you know, appreciate again, the inherent desire to be creative and flexible and, and looking at a comprehensive plan, I think it, you know, at first, you know, having walked by the existing tavern, tavern overlay district next to State Street in the later hours of the evening, or any hours of the evening when there's considerable drinks involved, there are opportunities for significant pedestrian risk, and for me, at least initially, as I think about a tavern overlay district, I think about parking, where are people walking, how heavily trafficked is it, what's the visibility, and there are people who very quickly accelerate through our village in the eleven, twelve, one o'clock hours of the evening, that at first blush makes me concerned from a safety perspective, there's other adjacent properties, be it the art gallery, for example, towards town, or even looking into the property to the north of the art studio, in addition to your property being front-facing with current parking, though you're looking to potentially remove it, that parking then would be across the street, conversely, something like Southern Linauto, which now it's an auto sales, but that is another property that has front, similar parking in front with a hundred percent current lot coverage, though it may not be zoned that way, you know, there's a discussion involved there, so I, I agree with members of the board here that I think in thinking about a tavern overlay district, but also thinking about a restaurant overlay district, you know, how do we create opportunities by right rather than by special permit and other structures by which the planning board historically approves these, or our board has historically approved these, that if we can create structures that allow for greater flexibility inherent by right rather than by permit, property owners like yourself, as you're looking to rent, you don't go the route of least resistance because there's something. go the route of least resistance because you're something other than that which may require a special permit, right? If what we want are things that require special permits, we're not going to get them. We're going to get the things that have least resistance. So, I think in the broader scale, and this was true in going through with the election and talking with residents, it's this question of, we've got a comp plan that wants things, but the things that we want, are they too hard to get? And as a property owner, the challenges of moving towards that direction, right? It's hard to do to a degree. So, I think the right approach, it may not be on the timescale that you're looking at. And I don't know which properties it may or may not include, but I think the right approach here is to think about overlay districts with structural elements, you know, that these permits might get approved by, right? Maybe it's times of operation, maybe it has to do with parking, and things where there's a greater certainty that if you're looking at a potential tenant, that you can say, yeah, this is going to go through because it's by right rather than by permit. But I do think for a tavern overlay district as well, restaurant overlay district, I think these are things that we need to take up in addition to many other items that we're trying to work through right now.
So, it's more holistic approach to really where we're going rather than the one of, yeah?
Really significant concern to just do, I know it's not spot zoning, but spot zoning, right?
I did write those words down.
I would just, yeah, I would disagree at all. I would agree with a lot of what he said. Putting myself in your shoes, that makes a lot of sense. Putting it in my shoes, I don't want to be the one to push you into a massive overhaul of how a whole zoning goes. And if I could be the last one to get the exception, that would be great in the former process. Understanding that you guys are very judicious in how you go about doing things and always referencing the comprehensive plan and the code. The, the timing is an issue. I'm coming here fully knowing well, having stood behind applicant in the past, what it takes, and I still want to go through it, but I, I, you know, if there is an extended process for us, there are other options we have that are not changing parking lots, and those are long-term leases if that doesn't change. So, I think there is some amount of like time, I guess, sensitivity here that we would like to move faster than probably that, that plan with all due respect.
Yeah. I appreciate that, given the options that you have. I think regardless of what the next month comes, I would have a very hard time doing that, regrettably for that. But the impetus, I mean, this is things that I think we were talking about, you know, during campaign season, you know, we came into the budget, we have the short-term rentals, we have other things that have been on the docket. But as far as success of the village long-term, I think we need to address some of these considerations. And again, it may not be regrettably on the time period, and your reason for coming here today just further clarifies things that we need to deal with, with, you know, properties that already have 100% lot coverage, like what does that look like parking? We need to address, you know, village-wide parking requirements. So, these are things that we need to work through. And regrettably, I may not be on board with a single...
I guess with respect, like the, I think the comprehensive plan addresses some of the parking issues and things like that. And I don't think, and I think we explored this and there's precedent, that in the past application, eliminating our parking is not going to be a constraint on the village, given the multiple public parking lots and other options.
Yep.
Also, the time of day that we could be potentially looking at doing this would likely not be during the highest congestion hours potentially of the morning, sort of midday.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot to consider. I also, I would consider our property is already adjacent to the tavern overlay. So, it's not a spot, it's really, and I don't want special, you know, I don't want anything special, just I think is a, it's a very small piece while a broader discussion about something much broader is happening, because there's obviously multiple properties that would be impacted, multiple property owners.
Yeah. So...
Once you go there, for me, it's the crossing the street with the tavern in the union, it's a very difficult thing when all your parking is across the street.
Well, there's non-street parking on this, on that side and all around on Main. You know, it just depends, you know, because when the, so the daily shopkeepers close, that's pretty much free, you know?
And it may be in the end, we're flexible too. I just think it has to be in the scope of the discussion.
Sure, sure. So, I'm thinking that then, if I'm hearing this from the board, the action item that is, we need to do a little more homework, Jeff needs to weigh in before I continue.
I have a question. You mentioned something about 50% of your revenue has to come from somewhere and 50% somewhere else.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe, I could be misquoting this, so let me say that, that for a business that wants to sell alcohol in the village, if over 50% of its revenue is from alcohol, it's required to be, have it in the tavern overlay district, I believe. Or, or, sorry, if you, if you have a liquor license and you're in the TDD, I think it is, you can have a liquor license, sell alcohol, as long as it's not over 50% of your revenue. I, maybe on this point, but based on my read and what we did, what we looked at is tavern overlay is the, is the necessary zoning to potentially open that type of stuff.
You're not confusing it with some liquor authority.
I don't believe so, but maybe we can explore it offline further.
Sure.
But I think the general, whatever the details are, I think the tavern overlay rezoning is still kind of the avenue we'd like to take. But if there's other aspects of the code that we could navigate, we can discuss that. I don't know it as well as you do. I'm not even trying.
Yeah, my recollection is when we discussed it, that we didn't find any, any practical way for the village to, to obtain that sort of information, that financial information. And so, that's why when we discussed our tavern overlay, it did not really involve the liquor authorities during addiction.
It didn't delay that.
That was completely separate. And the property owner needed to work with the liquor authority to what their requirements were. They had all sorts of things, especially with beer and wine as opposed to a full liquor license and the length of the bar and how many seats. And it's very complex. And we didn't feel as a village that we, we wanted to get involved in all of that. And so, we just sort of generally...
There is no percentage in either the tavern requirements or the restaurant requirements. It's the restaurant requirement that you can get by special permit, which is allowed in the zone, that requires you just, let's say just, requires you to have a full kitchen and that's within, and then, and then you can be a restaurant. There's no looking at percentage of alcohol or whatever. So, if that was where you were heading, that's where you needed to head. If you thought that's, you needed to head in the tavern direction to do that, you don't. Just have a regular restaurant provided, the definition's in the code. Restaurant is in 21041.1, and it is not in any way related to volume of sales from any particular item.
And further, Lily, yeah, the hours of operation will be dictated by the liquor authority. It would not be dictated by the village of Pittsburgh. So, if you had a liquor license and in this rest, for this restaurant, potential restaurant, your hours will be tied to that, to that license from the liquor authority, from the state. We have no, no...
Yeah, I understand that.
...over that, so. It may...
So, rhetorical question, what's the purpose of the tavern overlay?
It's to allow places that don't have a restaurant.
Just to serve alcohol without food.
Well, or minor stance. Yeah. There were probably a lot of...
Was the driving factor lock 32 model, company leave model, those are, neither one is, you know, all type of tavern overlays. It's a complicated issue, but that was the model.
Got it.
So, if you want to have food, you want to have a kitchen with food service for the restaurant.
And that's already allowed.
And that's a lot of that stuff in that lot.
That's good news, isn't it?
Certainly helpful.
Yeah.
Lot to digest.
I'm excited.
Lot to digest.
So to speak.
I, good one.
Well done.
I mean, I know, yeah. Okay, I appreciate the feedback. I think that, you know, I want to make sure that we're watertight on the, on the details and what is and what is not for my own application as we're looking at moving forward. So, if I could take it back and then maybe, Jeff, if I could make sure we're clear with you on...
Me and Steve.
The rules, you and Steve.
Same as well.
And then we could then at least say, okay, well, do you want to move forward with the tavern overlay or not?
So...
Or a request or petition.
I mean, we'd be happy to meet with you guys, you want to bring an attorney, whatever you want.
Yeah.
And just sort through it and see what is a practical way for you all to proceed, you know? So, either way, I think, you know, this isn't a denial, it isn't going to public hearing. It's like, okay, let's regroup here and get a little more information together.
Absolutely.
And I think that's the outcome of this, this particular agenda item.
That's helpful. One other comment on the, on the litigation aspect, just, is it, the, the, the sort of arguments and everything in the court, actual activity has been, has concluded, and so it's basically waiting for a judgment at this point.
Oh, okay. Great, thank you.
It's not necessarily...
Wishful...
I started that with, I'm not a lawyer.
Exactly. Either way, so I was excited as you were there.
There's no difference, but the respondents have brought a long view of motions to dismiss, which is the judge looking at the pleadings and deciding whether or not a state of cause of action. The judge, if he grants the motions to dismiss, then yes, the case is over. If the judge doesn't grant the motions to dismiss, or doesn't grant them in their entirety, then the case continues. And I'm not giving you legal advice, I'm giving you board legal advice.
Correct. Noted.
Yeah. But I mean, that's just the, how it would play out.
So, if I can, again, so just to conclude, so let me, let me digest this and maybe Steve.
Okay. Just down the street.
Yeah. The information that you had initially come in with was, that wasn't coordinated through the village at all, that was just your reading and understanding as a property owner of what you could do, or did that come from something that we have floating around?
Reading the, I asked Jeff in advance of the meeting, you know, he pointed me to the code, so I read the code, read the comprehensive plan in advance of that, and used that to draft our, our petition. And so, that was the first kind of precursor to this.
Got it. I think, quickly, if I'm wrong, you talked to Steve about the process.
I talked to Steve, so I sent that with Steve on the process.
Steve pointed him to that article of our code.
Yeah, and I said, this is what we're looking to do, and he said tavern overlay is the likely path you can go to to do what you want to do.
Okay.
He was very helpful in the process of...
Great.
Yep.
Okay, all right. We kind of have a game plan?
Great.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, call Stephen.
Yeah, you guys have set something up. Okay, next up, the review and update of the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Pittsburgh. So, this came to our attention, and I also met with Bill Smith last week. We've always had in place an intermunicipal agreement, you know, for shared services, things like that, and, you know, if, you know, we need to back up their code enforcement officer, we can help, or they can back up ours, or, you know, just things like that. And so, it came to our attention that the last one was signed in 2008, and you have a copy of that. And it's a five-year agreement, you know, so it's going forward. So, that happened. So, it expired in 2013, and Bill's like, I said, I'm going to, you know, bring it back to the board, he said, I'll bring it back to mine too, let's, you know? So, we just wanted to put it on the agenda and let you know, we're going to direct Jeff to just update this agreement, you know, as needed. And Jeff, if you want to weigh in on that and then, you know...
Yeah, I would think that you, all of you should read it.
Yeah, just make sure.
Before I make changes, just shoot me questions, thoughts, what about this, what about that? And we'll actually update.
Might ask if in the last five years, there's been any particular challenges, concerns, or disagreements that require different wording, or we might perceive should be differently negotiated?
You would have better knowledge of it.
Not that I'm aware of, I think. I think we've been acting like the agreement's been in effect, so there really hasn't been an issue until just recently, when it was brought to our attention to expire.
I think it was because of Steve or something.
Yeah, it was because of the billing factor issue.
Right.
Previously, we had a fire and marshal agreement that was totally a separate issue and that's non-existent now because Steve has also the fire marshal, so we do need that.
Only one way.
It really happened one way. So, with this, I think EGW and everybody act like it's still in place, so I think we just need to correct.
Bill Smith described it, he said, I guess we're tenants that will, the agreement, yeah.
The problem really is Steve, you know, he's trading those services. Everybody got a little glitchy, you know? It worked, but...
Yeah.
So, I think that's probably the primary motivation.
Yeah.
This helps with, as the concern was insurances, coverage, decisions made, you know, it just gives us backup for each party involved. It should be standard operating procedure to renew it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll feel briefly, it doesn't look like there's anything shocking.
Yeah.
I knew it earlier and I did something.
I did too.
All right, so then, this is something we would go down on our next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, if you...
Can we go down at this meeting?
Well, no, Jeff has to...
I want to make sure that I'm comfortable with it.
That you're comfortable with this.
I don't want to do that detail.
Oh, okay, okay. And then also, you know, you guys take another look at it. You can always shoot Jeff questions, as he said, and, you know, bring it back for the next meeting.
I think what I, the way I would handle it would be to, if we're okay with it, authorize the mayor to ship it up to the supervisor so they can look at it without us preemptively signing it before they've got a chance to look at it.
Okay, that makes sense because it's intermunicipal. Yeah, there we go.
Now, this does bring up a different item. Any other just comments on this item?
Well, do you want to close out this item? I mean, just with direction and, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, we're all good on that?
I will shoot you over if there's any concerns and then you'll go through it.
Okay.
And that'll be on your agenda next...
For our next...
First meeting is September.
September.
Decide whether or not it's okay to authorize the mayor to ship it up to the superintendent and have them consider it.
Supervisor, yep.
Good to know that. My only continuation wasn't on the agenda, but it had to do with town and village coordination. And I had at one point asked or spoke with the town about how taxes are different in the village and what services there's duplication on, so we get as a village resident some relief of the town. And I, in those discussions, had an opportunity to speak with the town, I believe, treasurer, director of finance, and they gave me some insight, but my level of understanding was suspect. It was a brand-new field for me. And I was wondering if anybody might find value in asking for a presentation perhaps from the town or invite them here before us, so that our residents, after many, many years of appropriating certain costs in certain ways, might be able to just hear in a public forum from the village how it is that is determined and why it is what it is. It was something that I was interested in because, of course, tax rates and the nuances of them are, I don't know how many services village residents are, in our taxes are paying for that then we get relief on at the town level, right? And that's why...
When you say relief on, excuse me, what does that mean to you?
Our town rate as a village resident is lower than the town residents' town rate. How is that determined?
Oh, that's, okay, just want to know specifically what you meant.
And how can we convey that to residents? I had a conversation, it seemed like in the moment, like I understood it, I walk away, you know, two weeks or two months later, and I'm thinking, what the heck did all that mean, right? And it'd be nice to be able to, when we talk to a village resident, what do my taxes pay for? Well, here's what it pays for, but here's what it doesn't have to, right? Because it's being picked up or you're getting a discount on the town. We're doing this, so you're not, you're not duplicating the service.
Definitely.
And I think it's been, you know, I've lived in the village for five years, and it always felt like I just had a tax on top, but you get a little bit of a cut.
Kind of, yeah.
So, why? And how is that number defined? And so, we don't have to do it in, I don't think we should necessarily do it in relation to this, and maybe this is three months out or four months out.
Well, you've given us a member I am, you know, from you.
It's something nice, it might be nice to have them prepare a document for us to review and understand, how do they go about creating it, and did we do our due diligence? Because this probably hasn't been done for five to 10 years, I don't know.
I actually might have some documentation. I think this was previously requested. Let me, Dave, and see what I have.
Oh, great. That's a good starting, you know, right?
I think I saw something, because it was a request from the town official. I think I saw something, because it was a request from the town officially.
I'm not questioning it at all, it's just.
It's good to know.
It's going to be able to communicate to our constituents.
Sure, I, let me see what I have, and I can forward it onto the board for your review. I think, if I recall, it gave how it was broken down.
Okay, that's great, thank you. So then at least give us a starting point, and then we can reach out.
Yeah, I think that's really important data.
Okay, thanks for bringing that up. Okay, next up, review of refuse districts.
You don't see anybody on, do you, do you see Katie from there at all? Okay, so I'm not sure if there's anything that needed to come from me, Katie is kind of just waiting to see, I know, last time we talked about this, you were gonna kind of do a little evaluation as to what kind of process it would be on the village, as far as finance and staff-wise.
Right, that was my charge, was to look at the impact on the village side.
Exactly.
Jeff would deal with the formation docs, everything putting in place, we did survey all the local Monroe County villages, none of them offer, have a trash district, they either offer trash services or not.
Oh, we get good timing, we're talking about that, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, we have the village.
Sorry about that.
Anyway, they're either offering trash services and trying to get out of the deal, because they, it's very costly for them to run their trucks and everything, and dealing with equipment, so this is a little different, because you're offsetting it with a hauler, your company, you're paying for that. So I did reach out to the town and talk to them, how they currently run their district. Right now, they're charging, I think they came in to like $250 a year, and they do add an admin fee, which is limited by town, that is not limited in village law, I talked to our accountant, to ask him, how would I set up a trash district on the village side, and that would be another fund, that would be like our sewer fund, and it would be set up in that manner.
The sewer district fund.
Correct, it'd be just trash.
Trash fund.
In fact, it has a code of FR, went that far, he's gonna call me back with even more, he was out on a site, we, we would have to, similar to the sewer fund, you would have to take a look and do a time study, and then you could set our administrative fee for offering the service, and that would be on top of whatever the charge came in from bidding it out. So to start that fund, it would have to be self-sufficient, just like our sewer, because depending on how the formation documents are created, we can't use general fund to self-studize. So what you would probably have to do, though, given the timing, and you'd want to put it into your tax bill, you would be looking at forming this next year, so we have time.
It would be put in place for next year.
Right, and then you would have to bid it out, do all your documentation, so all that, you would probably need to give, do an inter-fund loan to the trash fund, and when the trash fund has money coming in to pay for this service, it can refund the village for the startup.
So it's like seed money for the fund, that we just gotta go in, and then we get to collect the revenue, put it in.
And then you can pay back the general fund, and then that fund should be self-sufficient and add on a tax.
So you had to give me a general timeline, what are we talking about, you're saying, so to get the bid out.
That's gonna depend on formation of the district, and that, all I can tell you is, we would have to put it out to bid, there's legal notices, there's a lot of requirements the town had indicated.
And then there's one thing, too, that we were talking about earlier today, and it's not just how large can a district be, but also how small can a district be, and how, do we want one whole district, do we want to break up the village, you know, there's a few more moving parts to put in place, like how does this look for our village?
So I want to add some information, there's actually two pieces of information that I've just kind of just run across sporadically, and it just seems to fit into this whole process. First of all, I've been speaking with Saint's Place, next door to me, and they've had a lot of concerns of people going and using their dumpsters, they will go, yeah, they will go almost daily and put garbage in their dumpsters, and one of her comments was that I think that some people who don't pay for trash will use their dumpsters for trash, so I know.
The padlock dumpster, and they don't.
And I, and we did talk about some residents that, you know, are snowbirds, that don't want to possibly do a refuse district, because they don't want to pay for the six months they're not here, so that's one piece of information that I thought was interesting. The other information is, I know that there's been some concerns about the condition of our streets, and I was walking around the last couple of days, and I'll tell you, today, for instance, every single truck, Casella, Ales, they were all going down our street.
Sure.
So it's a lot of wear and tear, to have all those big trucks going down the same street, so I thought, wow, that's significant.
You're not recognized, give me one second.
So those are the. If you put it out to bid, and let's say, the whole village goes, you have a little more control of that, you could establish those, you could well establish the days of pickup, you can still do that by code anyway.
It's in our code.
Right.
It's already in our code.
I mean, obviously, the need to do the trash, the refuse district, is to help save the residents' money, and looking at just, I think we compared the mayor, she's running about $480 a year with monthly pickup, to $250, very well, if that's the rate we get, that would be significant savings on top of adding that fee.
But that's also saving the residents' money, too, by not having to redo streets, right?
Oh, yes, there's many benefits, there's multiple, you know, it's more than one.
You need an overhaul, you need to look at it, like you say, in the holistic approach for the whole thing, do you set up the districts, do you look at how many trucks you allow on the roads, how many, you know, what are we getting from those haulers? That's one of the reasons why we do collect from the haulers a licensing fee to be serving the village, you know, do we restructure that licensing fee as a time to increase that? That might be something.
And it would also be only residential, in other words, restaurants, anything commercial, they're on, you know, yeah, that's a whole separate, separate thing. I do want to just speak to snowbirds, because when we did, I asked Bill Smith about that, because, you know, they're really ramping up on the refuse districts in the town, and he said he's never had any negative feedback from snowbirds, because it's just a flat rate, it's on their bill, and it's cheaper than what they were always paying, you know, he said, you know, he's like, we're good, you know, I was paying $580, or whatever, now I'm $270, I'm good, you know, regardless of whether I'm away, or maybe I don't go away as long as I thought, or, you know, then you just know that there's refuse picked up whenever it's needed.
Sure.
So I thought that was an interesting sort of bit of feedback, because it's lower, that's the whole point of this.
Yeah, we try to accommodate the snowbirds, that's something where it's looking, that's more staff time going to be involved, so the simpler you make this, you know, we oversee it, we put it on the tax bill, we take a few calls, yes, tell them to call the hauler, you know, easier it is on the.
Do we still have to go through a petition process?
That's on formation, I don't know anything about forming, I just looked at the impact on the office, and I'm comfortable, after talking to the accountant, that we can cover the staff costs, the cost of, you know, the publicizing of it, putting it on the tax bills, everything that's involved can be covered in.
And what did it cost initially for the town just to kind of get, was it a couple of, really?
She indicated it was a couple thousand between their legal notices and everything, but I can't, she was gonna send me off for some.
She's gonna send everything.
Two or three.
Oh, great, thank you.
But we really need to look at what, on the village law side, what is required.
Thank you, Dorothy, that's a lot of help, thank you very much.
And then, Jeff, can you help us out here with, we don't have the petitioning process at the village level, it is only at the town municipality level.
But I would think you would want to do something similar.
So we reach, we can reach out with a survey.
Residents want this.
Can we do a public hearing, or a survey, or anything like that, another way, instead of going door-to-door?
This is a ward action alone, it's the adoption of the local law, so you have a public hearing, you have the local law, and I would think, rather than, you know, telling me to draft the local law, than sending it to public hearing, you want a little advanced information, that, what's your residents want?
And you know what I was just thinking, because Bill McBride helped with one of the last surveys, maybe he could help us again, I can give Bill a call, you know, because I think.
Don't help you with how you get a response, you know, instead of mailing a postcard out, and it goes in the recycler.
Well, or they also can take the survey online, I mean, I think we have to have a number of options for that, you know, but I'm just thinking, okay, I can, I'll reach out, we'll get, we'll gather information, does that make sense, like, you know, reaching out to our residents with a survey, and then maybe just a little information sheet that goes, you know, this is what a refuse district is, this is why we're looking at, you know, that kind of thing, so there's a little bit of background information, and we can also put that right on our website, we can, we'll do an article on the website, linking from the homepage, that this is what we're looking at, and you're gonna be getting a survey, you know, we can send information out.
I'm not certain we need to pay for anybody to help us out, understand what the public thinks, personally.
Who are we paying for?
I don't know if we need to pay for anybody.
No, I don't think, you talked about paying anybody, didn't you?
We're not talking about paying anybody.
Talking to Bill McBride.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not gonna cost us anything.
No.
All right, good.
Or volunteer.
I don't think he even charged for that survey, I don't think he even charged for the survey, that's a pretty big deal.
Do we have some residents that are really interested, and have some good backgrounds that may be able to help us as well?
Yeah, if there's any money involved, we'll bring it right back to the board, but I mean, right now, I think it's just, how do we.
To be honest, with the constant contact that we have, we can do a survey through constant contact, as long as we have the email addresses, we can send it out, it's, you know, it's the basics.
We can do it that way, and we can do it online, and, you know, we can have a number of ways.
I think it's easy just to answer a question, now, if we're gonna ask a question, so if you're gonna ask a question, then how do you phrase the question, how do you frame it, right? How much information do we need before we put that question together? And the other item is, is districts, you know, do we want districts, or do we just have one singular district? Personally, I think one singular district's the way to go, residential, only, commercial handles themselves, keeps it simple, and it's one bid, it's one separate line item on the bill, you're not, I mean, if you have two different districts, you got two different, separately funded entities, makes no sense to me, and how would you do it, northeast, southwest, like, why? Just put it out to bid, and get pricing, and see where we're at, we're about to venture down a bunch of, you know, new roads, I would figure, and the better we can do to preserve and protect those roads over a long time, because it's gonna be a big investment, the better off we are, in addition, the roads that we don't get done right away, they need to last longer, and those trucks aren't helping them last longer, because if we don't have the money to do them all at once, which we don't, then we better well keep them in decent shape between now and then, so I'm 100% behind this, I think residents, you know, if we frame the question appropriately, relative to potential and cost savings, I don't know if we can get bids before we make a decision as to do it or not, Jeff, is that something we can do, with an estimate on cost?
Sure, I mean, I would think you'd want to.
I think you can, it's, we're not signing anything.
Part of our research, it's part of what we want to do.
Yeah.
I don't know if we would want to invite in one or two of the current carriers that we have licensed here in town, to just give a presentation to us about, you know, what it might look like, and things that we would need to know, maybe we don't, maybe we don't need that, right, it's just trash pickup, but.
I would think they would have information they can provide, because you're just refuse districts all over.
That would be fine, too, so if we just want to get a little information on, you know, refuse districts that these carriers have put together in advance, but I would be hard-pressed to find a valid reason not to do this, because if somebody's saying, hey, it's $450 to me, and it's $250, or even if it's $300, $300, your savings on roads alone is gonna be substantial over time.
And just not having garbage on the street every single day of the week.
Garbage, and you can't, you can't go the licensing route, because whatever you're, however high you have to charge somebody to have a license in town, for it to be worth it to get, to have carriers drop off, to where you're only left with like one or two, they're gonna put all that cost back onto the consumer.
You still need the licensing for the haulers, because you're still gonna have the commercial entities, and that helps us keep them in check, and they also pay, yes, registered for keeping, keeping up the insurance, you still want that.
And I guess I would ask, if that's a consideration separately, let us know, we should raise that cost.
We should look at it and see, let's see if we raised it, and make sure it is in an appropriate amount.
Yeah, that's okay, but I think that's separate from the refuse.
Yeah, no, that's absolutely separate.
Okay.
So what do we need to do next?
Hang on one second, I know we had, Edie, did you want to?
Well, yeah.
Name an address for the record, just for our looking.
E-Linair 69A, South Main Street, so I talked to Justin about this a while, and I'm only doing this from aesthetically looking, like we have garbage cans in our small village five days a week, and sometimes on Saturday, it is a holiday, so I go with Cedric, they pick up recycling every week, they're there at 7 o'clock, they're gone, and we all go back, Caselli, and it's not, you know, I mean, I know they pick up recycling every other week, I've even called them on occasion to say, you did not come, when you said you were gonna come, even though I'm not a, you know, I don't go with them, and your recycling is blowing all of the village, so I just, I don't know, so I'm only looking at it like that, and like, I think we need to approach this like, it probably should have happened a lot sooner than now, because, again, you know, there's garbage cans out there five days a week, and big, huge trucks coming down, and, you know, we're a village of like 1,100 people, so I know Ron, who did it, this guy that moved there, he did it, and then I found out from Cedric that, that they, they do a lot of Pittsburgh, so why wasn't that being done when Bill was doing that with Pittsburgh? Didn't he start, because Cedric told me that Pittsburgh, they do some garbage pickups in neighborhoods, they're only, you know, that neighborhood has Cedric, or whoever.
Right.
Yeah, so was that something that Bill was doing, and?
Bill Smith?
Yeah.
Well, it was petitioned.
Okay.
See, the town has a different process to establish their districts than a village, under New York State law, okay, so the town had neighborhoods form their districts, but through petition, okay, so, and then it's really catching on now in the town, you know, so we're looking at the process under New York State municipal law, for how do we do this in our village?
Village.
Because we don't have a petition process.
Well, we have.
Right, so it's just, it's just a different, it's just different procedurally, that's all it is.
And it may be easier.
Yeah, it actually might, maybe easier.
So we might be able to move quickly.
So rather than saying, oh, everybody in the village has to sign a petition, now it's like, well, let's reach out to villagers and let them know about this, you know, it's not that it's about a petition, that's what we were talking about, survey, getting some feedback, I agree, I think it's a great idea, and, but nonetheless, you know, you do want your residents all to weigh in, so, and again, Dorothy has been collecting the data and getting the research, because we have to, there's a fiscal side to this, of how, not only how we administer it, you know, on the tax bill, but we have to literally set up, we have the formation documents, set up essentially the department, the financial reserve for it, and so, you know, there's just a few moving parts, that's, you know, that's where we are, that's all it is, you know, and we're all, I'm in agreement, I mean, it's the wear and tear on the streets, it's kind of a hot mess, the little village, you know, I get it, you know.
Does everyone have to agree in the village, I mean?
No, 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 I mean, we actually could just unilaterally decide this as a board, but what we're saying is, let's kind of get some pieces together, let's make sure all the residents understand, you know, it's kind of a big deal.
Right, so we're making sure that we hear the residents.
Can we then have a motion to, or maybe just ask mayor to communicate the intent to form a village-wide refuse district, I mean, do we have enough support right here tonight to start this process?
Why don't I do this, why don't we, why don't I draft, like, an information document about it, that we can send out, you know, through our e-bullets, circulated by you guys, make sure I'm hitting all the points that we want to hit?
Okay.
And just start, you know, let's put it out there, we'll put it on Facebook, we'll put it on our website, we'll do our e-bullets, you know, we'll start to, you know, get this information out there to people, because there are people in the village that maybe are upset about the garbage, you know, like all the stuff you're saying, those are all a bit pointy, but they might not have ever really heard of a refuse district.
Sure.
You know, so it's just the, it's the educational component of that, to just say, this is kind of where we're going, you know, we want to do this.
Start a agenda for next month, between now.
So that's, that's my homework assignment, you guys.
Yay, thank you.
Do we do this between now and next month?
Yeah, as long as I get my vacation in.
Yeah, so we'll try to communicate with the public, and then we'll put it on the agenda for next month, with the intent of seeing if we might come up with things to move forward.
To get this process.
To get it started on.
Can I suggest we do it the second meeting of September, to get the mayor plenty of Can I suggest we do it the second meeting of September to give the mayor plenty of time to get the document together, get the board to approve, get her vacation in, and then we can hit it.
And then you'll, you'll also have all the information from the town, that'll be helpful, too.
I'll have the town information.
How are, how are they doing this administratively there?
That way it gives everybody plenty of time and we're not rushed under the gun.
Okay, so then everybody's got, so you're, you have got a piece to do, and the mayor's got a piece.
Yeah, I'll just put it to the second meeting in September.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for your input, thanks for the comments.
Thanks. I mean, I, I, you know, I don't know all the... It just seems like a no-brainer, like, why do we all have the same? You know, I, personally, I really like Cedric, so my thing would be to stick with him. We do recycling every week.
Is it Cedric or Sarek?
I say Cedric.
Oh, okay, I didn't know, all right.
Sarek, I think it's Sarek.
It's got a Y in it, I thought, that's the only reason why.
Whereas Casselli's every other week.
Yeah.
So the one concern that a resident had on Stonegate Lane and, and Justin was that Casselli was the only truck that would go down there. But I think if another company was saying, like, if we go with you, would you go down Stonegate?
If you get the whole village in a bit.
Don't go down Stonegate.
Yeah.
Just like the small, you know, used...
Make the right-hand turn.
Yeah, make sure you make the turn, and so...
I know, that was so horrible. That was, that was, that was just a bad moment.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks so much, Edie, that was great. Okay, next up, continuing discussion regarding criteria for board appointments. Jeff sent that to us.
I handed it out, and I just...
Yes.
Oh, you have it, okay. And what was not on here, separate though, I just wanna add, is the fee schedule, I think that we were supposed to consider that or not?
I think it's in the local law.
Okay.
I think we would have got.
So that's a separate agenda item? Paper shuffling here. I know, I'm paper shuffling, I know it sounds terrible.
The, I... So my understanding is correct, with the adoption of this law, we would allow for the fee schedule to be updated from time to time by motion of this board? And that's what specifically this is permitting?
And also, maybe in the HPV code.
Okay.
Which is the top of the next page.
Okay, so 10516 is specific to...
Fire prevention and building laws.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Fire prevention and building laws.
Oh, yeah.
Because there's already a feature in the zoning code.
Okay, and then the 112-11, though it says fee schedule instead of fees, it's essentially for the HPV?
Correct.
Okay.
Actually, I think it's for all the boards?
What?
Wasn't it for all boards, for consultants?
The coding enforcement officer.
Isn't it?
This 112-11 is for the HPV.
I think it includes the HPV, it also includes the coding enforcement officer. But is that specific to the HPV?
I think it is.
Let's say, yes, specific to the HPV submission governed by this chapter.
Okay.
Yes, okay, right.
Number 219, 210 is where I'm thinking.
Yeah, that's the spot.
That's the other.
That's in the zoning code already.
Yep.
Okay. So then, once this is adopted, the, anybody who this would apply to could come forward to us and receive approval for an updated fee schedule.
We will do an updated fee schedule for them.
For them, though, should they recommend specific adjustments we could consider them? Because I was...
No, 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 no. This is the, this is the village of Pittsburgh's fee schedule.
This is ours.
So this is, will be imposed on a applicant coming to us for a project.
Correct, and what I'm saying is in the past, for example, during the annual meeting where we're looking at fees for the future, I think you had proposed...
Oh, the organization?
The organizational meeting, there was a list of fees, and at one point in the past, Steve had come to us with a list of different fees.
Making recommendations, yeah.
Recommendations, so where the recommendations for the updates come from, we still make the motion to approve or not.
When you said they, I thought you meant applicant, but yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so you're correct, yeah, and then we, we always have the final say on the fee schedule.
For sure, and it, and it requires a motion, so if we do adopt this, I think the next thing would be to ensure that Steve is comfortable with the fee schedules that apply to projects.
Right, and I guess I'm a little confused, because we always had that process. The board always has the ability to update the fees. I think we were just adding some additional language related to consultants in there? Okay, so I think the process was already in place.
Right.
And it's just...
Just an amendment.
Right, it's essentially an amendment.
Yeah, so sometimes there might be language in here that's already in the code.
You got it.
You're just adding a little bit to it.
So the consultant language was only to be found in the zoning code.
Ah.
So the recommendation of your attorney for 7511 was to put this consultant language generally in the code, for instance, so that it would apply to building inspections, fire inspections, all that sort of stuff.
Okay, great, thank you.
I think it covers us.
Good. So, so I have a question in regards to section 112-4A1, and it looks like it's also...
Hang on just a second, I think Lily might still be on the...
Oh, okay.
We're actually on the... Are you moving on to the next paragraph, section 112-4 point?
Yeah, no, no, we're done.
Is that where you are at?
Go with it, Lily.
Okay.
If you're, if you're done with the...
Actually, may we, may I suggest that we consider these in isolation?
That's what I'd like to do, too, I think it's easier.
Okay.
So my, my proposal would be that, and Jeff, please weigh in, would the next step be to move this section of code for fees forward to a public hearing? Or is there still an aging requirement that's...
So we're gonna separate it out. It would be much easier for publication purposes that we separate it out. Where there, I believe that we can say that this is, has aged, these sections have aged, and so I could just redraft a local law with these two sections on it, so that, that could be sent to public hearing.
Jeff, please. Yeah, then Dorothy, you could set up, you could do the...
Right, with that particular portion.
The reason we're doing this this way?
Sure, I, I don't have a personal, I would just like to do this the easiest way possible, so, and it...
Well, the, the way that I can tell you the most comfortable legal way is to make changes on this and then move the whole thing to public hearing, whether it's striking out sections or whatever it is. Now, I guess I'm all right, do it however you want.
I, I just think that...
I was, I was thinking that the public hearing seemed that they would have it, so.
And I think it's less confusing for the residents.
I do, too.
You know, the fees are one thing, and then the other thing is something completely separate, so to me, it seems...
So you're looking at two local laws instead of one.
I would also say, to call a spade a spade, I think the fee schedule is gonna be a unanimous vote if I had to venture a guess, whereas the others, there may be some disagreement, and it allows people to go on record uniquely with that item.
Okay, so...
If it's subject to our attorney, would it be appropriate to move forward to public hearing?
I would say that we're going to amend the proposed local law to move the fee, to move 105, this changes to 10516, and the changes to 11211 to public hearing.
I'm at about 210, 14, 11. No.
No, no, that...
It's 219.5.
Yeah, I think so, because that's just a renaming issue.
That's true, that's simple.
210, 19.54, I believe it was the same thing, isn't it?
This is 210, 19.5.
A.
Yeah, that should as well, that is the base.
It's just a renaming issue.
It's just a renaming issue, okay.
Okay.
All right.
So you wanna keep the renaming issues together with the fee schedule and then close forward? Dorothy, we have a date upon which we could have a public hearing.
Let me think, September 12. No, I already prepped myself, I knew that ahead of time. No, our next meeting is September 12, 6 o'clock.
Okay.
Since it doesn't have to go to the town. Okay. Oh, that's great. So that's, at this time, the public hearing on the draft for the law, local law change for fee schedule to include sections 105-16, 112-11, 210-14.1, 210-19.5A.
My second.
Did I lose the one?
Sounds like...
Okay.
And you meant September 12, 6 o'clock.
September 12, to move to public hearing on September 12, at 6:00 PM. At 6:00.
My second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Laker?
Aye.
Trustee Lick?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion, Chris.
Great.
So now we are going to discuss section 112-4 point A, paragraph 1, and section 112-4 point A, paragraph 2. That we discussed in our last meeting. And there, I thought, were some input from you at, at the end there, and, and I've since taken it into consideration, and I think it has merit. And I wonder if you might revisit what you were thinking at that time? I think your proposal was that we at least discuss returning to our original, or to the way the state law is set up, village law is set up, and that is that all boards are made up of village residents. And you made the case for the fact that we're a small municipality, and this allowed for more involvement by our village residents. And since we presently have, I would like to call it a backlog, that we have applications on file from villagers, it's not as if we're at a loss, it's not as if we're scrambling to find people to serve on boards. We have people who are willing to serve, so we don't have to go outside of the village to fill the roles. So if you would like to continue in that vein of thought, because I, my, my goal here this evening is to direct our attorney to please draft us a proposal that we can then at the next meeting send to public hearing. That is my proposal for the evening.
I think this follows the motion that trustee Marshall made at the last meeting.
Yeah, it was direction to you, okay.
This is the motion that was made.
No, this is not the...
But it doesn't mean that you can't change your mind.
Wasn't your address sent out?
So we have, so in front of us, what we have is an understanding that on the HPV, that we would be moving from a requirement of three members to be village residents to four members to be village residents. In addition, the second item that appears to have been crafted is the discussion by which, when a member resides outside of the village, as to whether or not there should be requirements as to professional experience, education, preservation, demonstrated ability, et cetera. And I think at the conclusion of our last meeting, I personally am, was 100% on board with trying to drive more participation within the village. Right now, the planning board has four out of five members. I also would suggest that to be at the HPV, because I do encourage and believe we have sufficient expertise and understanding and willingness to volunteer for both boards, right? And I'm very comfortable and would like to see four members of each board be a village resident. With regards to the second section, which was the professional experience, preservation, history, architecture, et cetera, I often think of this, you know, in the biggest scale, the appointment of Supreme Court justices. A president has the right to appoint to the Supreme Court whoever they want. They may not get approved, and Congress has the ability to question persistently, sometimes belaborably, right? As to whether or not that person is qualified to be on that board. And in my mind, I, I wanna try to keep it as simple as possible and recognize that as elected officials, you know, we're entrusted with responsibilities that we can act on how we all see fit as elected representatives. And I think one of those should be the quality of the candidates that are put before us, and we all have unique, different perspectives as to whether or not to allow them to go through. And so, as much as I would like to say that these are my own personal requirements, there may be occasions where it might be something different, or it might not, it might functionally best to have these not apply. And so rather than complicate matters, I think sometimes it's good to rely on elected officials to do what they've been tasked to do, which is determine if the appointments are appropriate, and if they're not, tell them why. Not necessarily try to drive it by code. As much as I think my decision would be based on things like this, I don't necessarily find it a necessity of code. So I'm definitely on board and supporting four out of five members of the HPV to be in the, in the village. But I don't necessarily think we need to restrict the quality of candidates that a mayor may appoint. If they should appoint somebody who is absolutely awful, well, good, show us that you are appointing very awful people, and we will deny it, right?
So you're saying there's already a mechanism in place, essentially?
And that's on us.
Because we're all elected and then...
And we're voting, and if we don't feel that it's appropriate, when it's...
For sure.
If I may, just a couple of comments. Jeff, I liked the, the word they used, prospective, in the, in drafting legislation here. I think that it's important to be clear that we're talking about future board members, and this wouldn't immediately change anything with regard to, to members who are presently appointed. So I just wanted to make that, that comment. Trustee Marshall, you made a comment about having this be simpler and, you know, not having specific qualifications in the code. I, I think that's a, I would agree with you on that. I, I think that it's important, as I believe I mentioned in a previous meeting, that having a village is about the, the ability to, to determine what, what happens here. And, and I think that affects planning, that happens, that affects the HPV. And I wanna make sure that on our important boards, we have enough village input. So I, I think that four out of five is a good start. My other suggestion would be that if we do pursue that path, that we would make sure that the chair is also a village resident on those boards. But perhaps at that point, we wanna just consider something simpler, which is just going back to all village members. And so I wanted to, I, I think that that would be the simplest approach prospectively, going to new appointments, just being all villagers, that's the end of it, as, as is the case with most other villages that, that I've looked at. So I wanted to get a board's thoughts on that, too, that's one possible direction.
Just as a footnote on that, we'd have to, we probably would consider whether PB or ZBA would have the same quality.
What I was, what I was suggesting is that, yes, it would just be all, all village residents for all the appointed boards. Thank you.
Can I make a comment? Thanks, thanks, everyone. As much as I would love all of our board members to be village residents, and as much as we have many people stepping up right now, we don't know what's gonna happen next year, the year after, the year after. And does that complicate things to where, say, you know, village residents are wanting to serve, then, then what do we do? Right, I mean, then do we have to...
We just changed the law again.
Yeah, right. Or you walk right with a smaller board.
To the idea of five people rather than four people being village residents, you know, there are unique opportu, or if you just think about the way votes could go, I mean, you could have two residents voting one way in the village, two residents voting the other, and the person in the town breaking the tie. And so you're potentially empowering somebody outside the village with the greatest authority if you have differing views. So a very simple approach would be, say, everybody's a village resident. I'm comfortable with a four-person, and I like the added idea of the chair being a village resident. Right now, I know the mayor has the power to appoint, though it is by approval of this board. Otherwise, in the absence of that, the board itself self-determines their leadership. Should four members of the village decide to have a member of the town be the chair?
Can I, can I speak to the role of the chair on the board? Because I, I think, I think somehow, over the years, and having lived in a number of other municipalities and worked with a number of other boards, and Jeff, maybe you can speak to this as well. The role of the chair on a board, and usually it's, it can be rotated every single year. It was, for example, in the city of Port Lauderdale, it was just, it was perceived as an administrative role to facilitate agendas in the meeting going forward. You are essentially a board of peers and function that way, so there's no one with any sort of greater power or not. So there's no one with any sort of greater power or not. Jeff, is there anything you want to add to that? That was always my understanding, that it was, you know, strictly more in that role, and that it was quite common in a number of municipalities. It's just it's rotated every single year, you know?
I mean, there's no special authority that comes along with being chair. Nothing a chair could do that a board member could do.
Yeah, you're just running a meeting and facilitating. So I don't know, and I think perhaps maybe in our community, it has sort of been perceived perhaps in a bit of a different way over the years, but is simply administrative. That's all it is. And the idea of rotating a chair, I think, is a healthy thing. Just that offload somebody who just did it for the year. The next person can do it. They kind of help facilitate it, nothing more than that. So I just wanted to weigh in on that.
And you may have somebody who's much better at that kind of thing than others.
Yeah, it's just sometimes people are, you know, better at running meetings, better at pulling the agenda together, that kind of thing. That's all.
So I think with regards to this, the way I would like to proceed with a vote that makes the most sense to me is we vote first on the membership requirement. And we start with what's the most restrictive. Because there's no need to vote the least restrictive. For example, if somebody were to make a motion to have all five members of the board be village residents moving forward prospectively, and we direct Jeff to amend the village law however, and then we see them adopt it. But if we vote on that and we don't get the votes, right, then we proceed to the next threshold, which would be a four member in the village and one member outside. With that, we could either include or exclude the requirement that the chair be a village resident. I think it's reasonable to include it. It doesn't come with any power or capacity, so I'm not afraid of it either way. But I would like to see four of the five members of the H P B. And then the third step would be to vote as to whether or not the member in the town would have to have
Certain criteria.
Certain criteria of approval.
So can I just put something in there? What if we voted in a way that says that we're asking for all five members to be village residents unless there is not a village resident that is stepping up to take that responsibility? Then they can go outside and do it.
Jeff?
Jeff, can you weigh in on that?
Can we do that?
Help him go in there.
He's loved the building.
I mean, I have the right to appoint.
That is so subjective. I think that's my problem. It's pretty subjective. What is no applicant mean? I mean.
No applicants applied?
Well. You know, what about no applicant? Even if the applicant applied, it was absolutely no capacity or, you know, I don't even have to ask, any capacity.
The mayor doesn't feel that they're appropriate.
Because it goes back to.
Your authority, doesn't it?
The authority of a.
Well, no, no, no. I was meaning, not really. I wasn't speaking to that at all. I was speaking to, if you get someone who has really no interest and just wants something to do on a Tuesday night, and they're, you know.
For four hours, yeah. The rich club isn't meeting, okay.
But you don't have someone who's genuinely signed up for this thing. I think it's just too subjective.
Okay, yes.
I think here, if the board opts to not appoint residents outside of the village, so long as we're clear and direct with the mayor with regards to our appointments, as to what our expectations are, then either we receive an appointment or we don't receive an appointment. I think the fallback to allowing it to be four rather than five is to suggest there's an optionality that we don't have to exercise if we, as a board, know that there's other applicants and other interests. The flip side of that is, is if you're just resident only, it's upon us to encourage participation where maybe there wouldn't be any. And we go out and we solicit it. I don't know to the degree by which we've all been on nonprofit boards, but getting people to be on a nonprofit board and to commit, it takes a little effort. You got to recruit, right? And to get quality people, you got to find them. And sometimes by having a five-member board being village only, if there's an avenue by which you can go outside of it, then you don't do the necessary recruitment to encourage the next level of, you know, representative. So I think there's value to a five-member village resident, but it would put more work on us. Conversely, if we think that we don't need to go do the recruiting, and we just allow it to be four or five, we can sit here and say, I'm sorry, you know, mayor, we're just not going to appoint anybody outside the village. And then we have to work within that.
Yeah, you have the right to do that, absolutely.
So I'm so comfortable with the four of five, with that understanding of power that we have. And if I happen to be in a minority and three other members approve an appointment, then that's the prerogative of the election.
Right, you should have got somebody else that you want.
Yeah. But these are clearly not things that are talked about on the election trail, though. So this is why if the majority opts for five out of five, I'm certainly comfortable with that, but I'm also comfortable with four.
But why don't we take it to vote? Oh, yep, excuse me. Yes. Name and address for the record. Sorry.
Susan Loda, eighty-five South Main, in the village. So when I was appointed by the previous mayor, I lived outside the village and was immediately immersed in the planning board with major litigation, major responsibilities. Now I live in the village. I'm the same person. I have the same alibi. So I am thinking, I would be in favor of giving you the flexibility to have four members in the village, at least one on the outside, that you could, you wouldn't need to have that person on the outside, but you could. And I think that you never know. And I think you never know as a board member what training is coming down the track at you. But I think that if anybody shows the interest to assume that responsibility on a board, that they should at least be able to be considered.
Yeah. And I've definitely enjoyed my time on the board with you.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll also echo that. I appreciate my time on the board with. I guess just to clarify, so before 2019, the requirement was all village residents. Is that right?
It was six?
No, it wasn't? Okay, so that's how you're appointing, is because this requirement actually goes back?
It has one of them could be someone.
The change was made in 2019? Is that?
No.
I think the change to for the H P B was made, I don't know, that was 2019.
No, that was before.
That was before 2019.
That was before.
Like 2018, 2017?
Yeah, it was in my tenure.
Barely recent history.
So I was appointed in fifteen.
That's awful.
Thank you.
Susan, it was only, you were the only town resident, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so but I think.
And she had nine years on Main Street.
So the P B and the Z B A did not track, I'm sorry. The H P B and the P Z B A did not track identically with membership.
That's right.
So sooner the H P B went to two members before the 2019 code change, and the P Z B A did not. Whatever that's worth. And the theory, again, was qualified applicants.
That was my starting point when I, at the last meeting, when I brought this up, was that word qualified. And the initial discussion that we had was, how should we quantify that? In other words, if you're choosing, from a level playing field, between a villager and a person who lives in the town, I didn't know how to express that the villagers had more skin in the game, they had more at stake, if you will, than. And that is why it was thought villagers for village and village government, villagers for the village municipality. And that had been that way in most villages across the state. And here, we made a change. And that was because we were looking for specific qualifications that were difficult to come by in our small municipality. And that specifically, at that time, was qualified architects, specifically historic architects, which were available in the town of Pittsburgh, but not in the village at that time. And so that is why that initiated that change to allowing, if you will, expansion for looking outside of the village for it. But I also want to add that I understand the whole qualified architect component, and that's why there is the mechanism for the H P B to have, and they're appointed every single year, an architectural, you know, qualified architect as a consultant to the board. You know, boards always have the capability of reaching, you know, getting, receiving resources to do their job. You know, whether or not there was an architect on the, you know, I'm just saying. For example, if there was not a preservation architect on the board, there is always a consultant made available to the board, you know? So there's another piece to that, that's, they're not a board member.
But I think historically, you bring up a good point, that we've been there before and we needed this. And now you're just saying that we're now bringing it in our vote.
No, I'm not saying we needed it. It was broad at the time, maybe in reaction.
Right, in reaction.
There was some, something that was driving it.
Right.
And so it was a response to a perceived challenge that the village was facing. Since that time, I think that, all I can point to is, I think my understanding is, from what we have received from Village Hall when we have an opening on a board, is that we do have multiple applicants. And I would, speaking personally, my preference would be that village residents would somehow take precedence, would be considered first in this applicant pool. And I don't know how, you know, you can't put that in a law as Justin pointed out, because I didn't start out in that place where, let's go back to just village residents holding village. When you brought it up at the meeting, it was kind of like a light bulb went off, and I thought, yeah, you're right. That's exactly right. It should be for villagers first, and then second. And when struggling with those criteria, and this, did this qualify? Did that qualify? And it's so subjective. And the easiest way, as Justin just pointed out, the straightforward path to say, it's village residents. These are village boards, and they serve village residents, and it should be made up of village residents. So that really clarified it for me. And I'm very good with that, without even having to go so far as to put in specific criteria. I know when Susan was considered for appointment, it was pointed out to us at that time, which was valid, is that she had run, was running a business on Main Street and had a unique perspective, and had been there for a number of years. And that brought a special lens to the board, which was valuable. And the board agreed. So she had skin in the game. So as a villager, because.
But technically, she would not have been allowed to serve.
Yeah, that's what I mean, in some standards. Before the law changed.
Right, so maybe we open it up to people that have businesses.
I don't know. You know, then we're starting to get the objectives.
And we were lost, Susan, if we had these places.
But I want to follow the line of logic, because I think it's interesting. And of course, we always want our villagers to participate. But I'm thinking of the very notion that, okay, you know, certainly she had a business in the village, but even if she didn't, for example, the idea that because she lived one house across the village line in the town, that she didn't have skin in the game for the village, you know? I mean, I'm just want to really, and I just want to track that thought through. Because we have village people that can serve on town boards, and I think that they would say they have skin in the game because they're willing, they'd love their town, too. You know, I'm not so sure where this is going. I love the idea of villagers being on boards. We always want the participation. But the idea somehow that because you're on another side of a boundary, you have more skin in the game, I'm just using your term.
I know, sorry. I wish I could have thrown that in the.
But no, but, you know, I don't know. I grew up just outside the village. My dad had an office in the village for twenty-eight years. This was my village, you know? So I just want us to kind of look at a larger lens there, you know? That if we have one person from the town on a board, I think they're going to have skin in the game. It's their village, too, you know?
Maybe the fixer part of that, you're fucking that.
I think in a stylized example, if five members were outside the village line, we'd probably find that to be questionable.
We don't want that.
Right, we don't want that. To have two members, I don't want that. Three members, I don't want that. That's where we are now. Seventy-five Monroe, if you look at the votes before, with two members living outside the village voting to approve it, when it went through the one-twenty-one-five H P O process, and that overturned or gave them a remedy to address the L W R P and the composition of the board at that time, and I'm correcting where members lived, two of them were outside the village. That still bothers me today.
So you think it's because they didn't live in the village that it changed their vote?
I don't know why.
Well.
Right? I don't know why. I'm not suggesting that.
I'm asking these on very large rhetorical sort of levels about how we perceive people.
I'm not suggesting their votes are as a result of being in the village or the town. What I'm suggesting is governments have boundaries and borders, and within those confines, people are self-governing to the degree that the state law allows. And I'm simply suggesting for the boards that adjudicate our rules and laws that we create, I would like for it to be certain that at a minimum, fifty percent of the village participation on those boards is approving what's being approved. Whereas if you had two members of the H P B and three members, two members in the town and three members in the village, you can have decisions that are voted on in the affirmative with two members outside the village and one member of the three in the village, and it will pass. And so what I'm thinking about is, I want decisions to be made by village residents, but I like the idea, I'm fine with four members. Because it gives the flexibility, it gives us as elected trustees the opportunity to say yay or nay. And we can have any given reason why. It's subjective, right? And that allows for, you know, Susan, to come in and offer opportunities. And it puts us in a little bit of a pickle if we're a little short. Maybe we have to bring in a village resident who's never had any experience doing any of this before, right? And Justin, I don't know if you or any of us here, at some point, we're all new to this. And so I, I don't know. I don't know if you guys want to vote on the five of five. We'll see where it goes, but I.
Well, right now, we have the four.
Right, and this is just for four.
This was, yeah, put it with four. This, that's what's put for us right now.
Can I, I'm sorry, we just lost our camera for the politics.
They can still hear us?
They can hear us.
Jeff, is that sufficient?
Did you have your, did you want to comment? I don't know. Or we could.
Yeah, I'll just.
Nothing is sufficient.
Oh.
So.
Great.
I mean, you don't have to. But this has become your policy, so it should be your policy.
We got what?
Just give me a minute. I got the, somehow the cord back hold, some possibility.
Please, Tilly. Tilly's our ghost.
Or even.
Really? Sarco's.
So can I suggest the board take a five-minute recess?
Okay, if I make a motion, we adjourn for five minutes. Is there a second?
Second?
Roll call. Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Lickett?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Thank you. We're good to go. Video's on. Captions on.
Yeah, captions, captions on.
Okay, I make a motion to open the meeting?
Second?
Roll call. Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Lickett?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Trustee Lickett?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so we're picking up on this discussion here. Yes, Justin?
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I appreciate the discussion on this. I have a question first. Jeff, what would it look like to draft legislation to have all five members be in the village? Would that essentially be a deletion and we would just fall back to a state law?
It's not state law because HPP is a creature, not state, it's not state law.
Village law?
No, it's not a question, it's a village code. Entirely our village code. It would just look like, you know, all five members must be residents, it's just a very easy code change.
And include moving forward.
And then, and then, you might take a look at current B, I don't know if anybody can pull that out, 112 hyphen 4B, but it does have qualifications for board members generally. A board member shall have interest, experience, and training in historic preservation and planning as determined by the mayor and board of trustees.
Thank you.
If you're very, you know, whatever.
Yeah. You know, this, this is a tough issue. In particular circumstances, we can say that it's opened up possibilities to allow for people outside of the village to join the appointed boards. And I think it's impossible to kind of separate it from some of the benefits that we've gotten from those provisions over the years. But I do like the simplicity of just saying that they're village boards and that's what it is. You know, to me, it seems a little bit disproportionate perhaps that everyone in the village gets one vote when it comes to elections, yet on our board, even with a provision for one member to be outside of the village, they get 20% say in the decisions on those appointed boards, if it's a five-member board. And I think that, you know, it's, it is a tough call. I think that in the end, I would favor simplicity and with the understanding that, of course, we can always change the laws again if we find that the benefits outweigh the disadvantages of going to a simpler model.
Are you making a motion?
No, hang on one second. I just hear.
So just to look back again, 2015, a five-member, village-only member board, planning board, quit. That's an unlikely circumstance in so many scenarios, but it happened. So, yeah.
And that five-member board also gave the approvals?
Yes.
For seventy-five Monroe?
That's right.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, you know, I just question the simplicity, you know, I don't know if that's the most important consideration. It sounds that way, but we have already seen so many circumstances when, when you say change it again, so you would have had to change the law in order for somebody to be on that board before court sessions, before, you know, somebody had to be there for the applicant to talk to.
Yeah, I would like to weigh in just in a completely different context. You know, the idea that, you know, somebody from the town is 20% of the vote or however, you know, whatever the ratio. Boards are there to serve the community and apply criteria, apply code. That's it. You know, all of the, are they in the village? No. Maybe they weren't in the village long enough, maybe they just moved in, maybe they, they lived in the village for a number of years, just moved across the line to the town. I still go back to the idea somehow that we're conflating some things here that I think actually do disservice to a lot of members that have been serving on boards from the town that have served our community well. You know, you're there to transact business on behalf of the community that you're serving and you apply the criteria accordingly and you, you know, work with your applicants. So I don't know, I think we're, I think it's becoming a little mixed here and, you know, I mean, I, you know, Dave, I appreciate, you know, thinking, okay, maybe one person from the town, you know, you want to cover bases, it's at least an option. I think that's probably still somewhat more realistic. I don't think it matters either way, whether you're from the town or the village, depending on how you vote. I mean, you just gave an example of a past board that was 100% villagers and many of them had lived in the village for decades. So I don't know. I mean, I think we can keep coming up with things to prove or disprove a rule, you know, or an assertion, you know, they're board members, they're people, they're human. Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just very briefly, I do think that the notion of flexibility in case somebody leaves a board is an important one. I think that we should also look at the structure of alternates and making sure the alternate seats are filled in order to make sure that we can handle changes in the board's nonavailability.
Okay, yeah, Lisa?
I was just saying that I'd like to move forward and make a motion. Okay. I mean, I would like to make a motion to approve as written, section, I guess, is 112 dash 4A1 and section 112 dash 4A2.
Can we double them separately?
Okay, I will make a motion to approve as submitted, section 112 dash 4A.
I will second.
Okay, discussion. Seconded, discussion. Yes, Lily, did you?
I am still of a mind to agree with what Justin has brought forth this evening as far as simplicity. And I think I'm stuck there.
Okay, okay. Yeah, thanks, thanks for weighing in. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a question.
Further discussion then?
Further discussion.
Yes?
So my original thought was to vote on the five of five first and then do the four of five.
This is where we are.
Right now, we're the four of five. Should we do the four of five first? We can always do the five of five and it just immediately amends it again. Is that correct?
We already set a motion in place, so.
We have to act on the motion.
Here with the motion.
So we have a motion before us.
Do we, I'm just asking out of courtesy to the other members who've expressed a differing view, not knowing where everybody falls. Do we want to rescind that motion and bring forward the different one first out of courtesy? Or do we want to just move forward with a four of five?
You don't really have rules and regulations that reach that deep into whether or not you can rescind a motion. Presumably, once it's been moved and seconded, it's a motion, it needs to be voted on.
Okay.
If I may, just a procedural issue, the motion was to approve these sections, however.
One section.
One section.
But that's, we're not in a position to approve it, we're in a position to move forward.
So move to public hearing.
Very good. So we could actually move multiple things to public hearing. You can move this and a five of five to public hearing, correct? They're opposing motions, but if.
Yeah.
We would get, if it went to public hearing, we would get an understanding on both.
I would think if it goes to public hearing, in other words, it only goes to public hearing when the board has deliberated.
That would be confusing.
And taken the action to bring it back to the public for a final vote. In other words, it's not one from column A or one from column B. We have decided that within the board to bring it to the public. Am I following that? I've never heard of this.
I've heard of it.
Of course, you had to think of that. Well played.
It's beyond anything I've ever heard.
What I'm saying is.
Part of me wants to say, I don't know why you couldn't.
I don't.
But.
I think it would be very conflicting for the public hearing notices, people wouldn't know what you're doing.
As part of the discussion, can I just, so we have to move this forward, we can deny it, but we can bring it back five minutes later, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if it's voted down, we can bring it back again?
I can just make the motion five minutes from now.
Yeah, because this is not like a ZVA motion.
So it sounds like.
So what's your intention, what is the intention here? I mean, I'm trying to.
My intent is that, my intent is for the members of the board who'd like to see five of five to allow it to come to vote, should they choose to do so. And whether or not others may turn it down and at least ask the question and puts it on the board. The subsequent comment would be then to bring the four of five to vote, which is the least restrictive of the two options.
Right.
If we bring the four of five to vote now and it passes, then we don't get to have an opportunity for the members who appreciate the five of five to vote differently.
Okay.
And so, so I think, I'm ready to vote.
The attorney has signaled.
Maybe the movement would amend her motion.
That's where I was coming.
To make it five of five.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to amend section 112 dash four to represent five of five board members will be village residents.
And to move that to public hearing.
To move to public hearing on September 12th.
Six o'clock.
At six o'clock. Do I have a second?
That doesn't presume your vote, it's just.
It's just your, you're bringing.
Actually, if you're moving it, anyway, who seconds it, you're supposed to vote aye.
That's true, because you're moving it to public hearing.
Well, that's what it has to do with.
I thought I had, oh.
It's to do with motion practice.
Oh, motion practices, yeah.
You have never adopted rules that deal with those kind of issues.
Yeah, okay. So where's this going now?
Well, I'll second the motion, as amended.
So now we're at five of five. That's where we are.
And now it's, now we gotta do the roll.
Now we gotta do a roll call, now we're doing a vote of five of five.
As to whether or not we want it to go.
To go to, to go to public.
To whether or not.
Would you like to bring that motion forward, otherwise keep it the way it was and then it back to the board?
No, let's bring that forward.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, trustee Lickett?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfield?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Oh, we're going to be able to vote on the next one as well.
Well, it depends if you vote one down or not.
If you vote, if you vote this down, then, sorry, we're in the middle of voting, but if you vote this down, then another motion can be brought. If you vote positive, then this is what.
Then that's, that's what's going to go to public hearing.
Yeah, let's go to public hearing.
So, no. Trustee Marshall?
Nay.
Mayor Plummer?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, is there another motion?
So now I make a motion to propose as written, section 112 dash 4A1, that one member of the board may be a town resident and four will be village.
To move to public hearing.
To move to public hearing for September 12th at 6:00.
Okay, is there a second?
Aye.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll.
Yeah, I just have a question about that. So the requirement that the chair be a village resident is not a part of this.
It's not as written. She made the motion as written.
Right, it's not as written.
Right, so just to clarify, it would just be a straight four of five requirement.
Okay. And we can make a subsequent motion to have that requirement added, but it's not part of this.
Throw down this motion and we'll talk about that.
Yeah, let's complete here. Okay.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfield?
No.
Trustee Lickett?
No.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up.
I don't think you can control the chair nomination. It's for, you allow for four of five to be in the village, I don't think you can control nomination of the chair with the mayor of those four and five members. Because it's not an appointment, it's not a, it doesn't just qualify anyone from sitting, it's an appointment of a chair position. I'm going to think about this.
But we don't need to vote in the appointment, right? We can.
Yeah, you still have that option.
Right, we have the option not to.
Yes, you always have that option.
Naturally, yeah, for sure.
I'm just trying to figure out. I think you can, and the chair shall not be, shall not live on center of the village votes.
We can add that to our motion. We can make that a motion.
I think you can have the qualification of the chair. Because you're not really, and I really want to do some research. This is, I'm going both ways on this thing.
Okay, excuse me one second. Yes, Susan?
So just kind of thinking that through, so I wonder if you, you have, if the chair is a village person and can make the meeting, and so then you could have a non-village person chair of meeting. So what do you, so what are you, what do you do?
To me, it's an administrative role. You're just there to run the meeting.
So I'm just wondering how, that, I don't see how that gears.
I don't know. People will give you an answer.
Well, we'll, we'll let Jeff look at it.
Yeah, we'll have to research that.
I'm just not, because I don't, there's half of me that says, and it is 50% of me that says you can't screw around with the mayor's power department, the other 50% says you're just putting your qualification out of office.
Yeah, my comments.
So.
And, you know, out of, out of respect, can I make a statement? Out of respect to all of us here, my rationale for allowing a town resident, as much as I want all village, and I have faith in our elected mayor to look for all village residents, I truly do. And I have faith in the system that if we don't get what we're looking for, then we just don't vote it in. So, and that's the way the village, the village code is written. And I, and so, you know, call me, you know, naive, but I just think that as, as a team, I think that we can work quite well together within some restriction, but not being so tied. That's just my philosophy. That's where I'm coming from, just so you guys understand my, my thinking, respect.
I was simply going to add that, you know, my expectation for the board would be five out of five.
That's the goal, of course.
And I think as we look forward to the appointments, for those appointments, we have qualified applicants. And let's hope that we move some appointments forward and as well on the alternates.
Okay, Tony, you have a related issue to board appointments, if I may, not about
the laws, but Dorothy, I wanted to say thank you for adding the terms. I'm sorry, Jeff, do you want to go ahead on the, on the first topic?
If you do one, are you going to do two?
What, you mean section one?
Oh, we missed one.
Yeah. Yeah, we still had that one waiting, but I think there's.
Okay, go ahead, no, go ahead then. I need to go ahead with that motion first.
If you've passed one, then the question is whether you want to do two.
And that's meaning that the town person has to have these criterias in order to.
We have to ask to be qualified differently than the village resident.
And then, did you want to, well, you talked about simplifying that. Are you, where are you going with that?
Well, that just suggests that I'll vote no on this.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I just.
I'm not sure what you're looking for.
Can I, can I speak to that, Dave, about your voting no?
Sure.
Can I change my mind?
Yeah.
The only reason why I like that is because it's giving a rationale as to why we're not putting a village resident in there. Because maybe the mayor feels that there's a lack of experience that needs to be fulfilled based on that specific reason, the experience base. So that's why I kind of think that that's important, because we're not just saying any old village resident come in and take over the seat of a, or any, any other town resident come in and take up the seat of the village, village resident. They're coming in because there is a specific need and they have, you know, knowledge base. So that's why I really like that, even though I'm assuming the mayor would do that anyways.
And so, so, I mean, and just following that logic then, so if you're a village resident, and we've done this, that has really virtually no experience, they're still better having them on the board. I mean, I'm just, just, I want to follow the logic.
If you have other four, if you have three other village residents that do have experience, yeah, because then they'll be able to learn, they'll be other board members. Yeah, because again, I can best skin the game thing, as much as we don't like to use that phrase.
Yeah, no, I just, I just want to make sure we're all clear on our logic and how Yeah, no, I just, I just want to make sure we're all clear on our logic and how we're proceeding this, you know? No, it's a good thing to discuss. Okay, so where are we going with this?
So does somebody want to make a motion for that, section 112-4A2? As written? I might as well make it, section, I'd like to make a motion, section 112-4A as written
Two.
To go to public hearing on September 12th at 6 o'clock.
No, A2.
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 Did I say that?
Prentice is two.
A, yeah, prentice is two, I'm sorry. To go forth to public hearing on September 12th at 6 o'clock. Do I have a second? Okay, so motion fails.
Okay.
So it leaves it as is, four out of five, it's going to public hearing.
Okay.
Can I, can I make a, just as an explanation, my lack of a second there. Personally, I agree with the sentiment in that code, I just feel that it's still too subjective to really have meaning, and, and it's not worth putting into, into law, the qualifications there, so that's, that's my rationale. Not that I don't like the ideas.
But, no, but thanks, thanks for sharing that.
Thank you.
Okay. So what's next?
Just to clarify, that will leave us with our original B qualifications of the board members generally, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Shall have interest in.
Okay. Okay, all right. Next up. Firing of the archivist receptionist.
Normally, we go into executive sessions, press firing, and then, you know.
I'm wondering if there is anything unrelated to the specific attributes of the applicant that we wish to discuss in a public session before we consider the particular applicant in private.
Yeah, yeah, so, that's a good question, I sort of was thinking of a member item, but it kind of bumps into this as well, which is in thinking about the budget, and thinking about how we've laid out reserve funds. First, Dorothea, could you reference, have we put the hiring of an archivist or receptionist? Is that cost currently in the budget as adopted?
Yes, it is.
It is.
The position hasn't been filled for how long?
Just a short time, since Megan Leck Alexandria was previously in the position, so.
Okay, so there's no.
It's always been in the budget to get an, you know, it's not.
If I may ask then, the existing budget as adopted contains compensation related to this position in its totality, there's.
Yeah, it's 20 hours, it's a part-time position, it's 20 hours a week, it's in the budget, it's well within.
Because I do want to spend a little bit of time as a member item, talking about the reserve and talking about the long-term plan. It would be significant, but do we want to do that before or after we go into?
Why don't we do member items right now?
Yeah. It's usually clean out.
Yeah, that way.
So we're not to go off.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and we're going into the third hour? Yeah, so just, everybody, please be aware of time.
Yes, because we're pretty good.
You know.
Are we doing member items?
Yes.
Okay, I have member items.
Willie, do you want to tell us about your member item?
I do.
It's a pretty one.
I met with trustee Coe on Main Street a couple of weeks ago now, when we walked to both sides of the street. And in our discussion, it came to my attention also, we talked about the urns, and we talked about plot of land that is in front of the SJ's building. And I understand that there is going to be a scout project that is going to address that little, what's called the future garden. But until that occurs, I am requesting from the board to spend $300, I'm asking for $300 to spend at Bunshoes for the purchase of mums in the fall that will go into the urns at the four corners, as well as the plot of land in front of SJ's and into the two super pots on Shane's Alley that are on the dock. So that would be those two super pots, the three urns on Main Street, and the plot of land sitting in front of SJ's, and I'm requesting of the board to approve an expenditure of $300.
I think it's already in the budget and was already discussed with, that was brought up to me by DPW, because they're, they're always traded out.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, in, in terms of in front of rural SJ's, what, you know, yeah. But I mean, that's always in the budget, I don't know that we need a motion.
So the urns and the super pots were all.
Yeah, they always switch, they switch them out in the fall.
They, they, they do take, yeah.
I mean, it's in the budget, $300 is fine.
Yeah, so is the board already moving forward and?
Yes.
I contacted Bob Munshu, and he's gonna provide the plants, and they're two for 25, and so.
Oh, that's pretty good.
Okay.
Okay, and they're business for the super, super large one.
Yeah.
Is that okay with the board?
Yes.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Great, okay.
I also just want to say, just getting back to the scout project, because the scouts were at scout camps this summer, but they're gonna be reassembling, so I'm meeting with Jim Engel White Oak Nursery, because he has an incredible native score to continue our pollinator and butterfly corridors and all that. So he's gonna help work on a little plan, you know, after the mums.
Yes.
For that area, you know.
I figured it wouldn't happen until then.
Yeah, while the scouts go away in the summer, so, but, that's great, that'll be nice fall call. Okay.
Got a second member item, hang on. That's okay.
And it was a question I had posed it to the, to a board member, nobody knew the answer to this. I wasn't present for the approval on the special use permit for La Doue Cafe, but I presumed that it occurred, that they did get.
Yes.
Okay. Since that time, nothing has happened at the property, and I've seen other groups of maybe tenants going through with, with real estate.
My first standing speaking to Steve, they finalized their lease and they are moving forward.
They are moving forward, okay, so those usurpers were in there illegally looking.
Or maybe, maybe they were the designers.
Yeah, there we go.
No, it is moving forward, is my understanding.
Which cafe?
It's the, the pastry, the bakery.
Oh, yeah, yeah. They're going in.
It's going.
Steve met with them today. Yeah, yeah.
They're all set.
They're all.
They finalized their lease.
Okay, good. If nothing was happening, and then I saw these other groups of people going through with their agent.
Well, he just started the dental program at University of Rochester, Eastman Institute of Oral Health. And they're getting some pieces, I think, in place, you know, he's got a lot going on.
Wonderful.
So that's all that was, I don't think.
When there was nothing more than.
But I'm gonna preface it, that's what I heard from Steve, that everything is set and they're moving.
Oh, I met with Steve today, and that was part of the meeting, he's met with him.
So their product does not create cavities, is that what you're saying?
No, if it creates cavities, we had a dentist right there.
Bake them and pull them.
Bake them and pull them, this target one is coming, I got panicked.
Have some more gelato.
I have, I have a member item, mine, mine are even today. All right, so I heard that there was possibly an applicant looking at a restaurant for the bank?
That's the bank?
No, no, this bank.
Oh.
Does anybody hear anything like that?
Uh, I don't know that that is gonna go anywhere, based on the needs, you know, other things, I can't. I don't know that it's going.
I've had a couple residents come up to me, again, concerned about the storefronts being vacant, and asked, is there anything that the village can do? I must get that question all the time, is there anything the village can do to get those storefronts filled? And one of the women I was talking to yesterday says, and I explained to them that, you know, we don't have opportunity, you know, it's owned by a, it's, it's a private relationship with a, with a renter and the owner. And they said, is there any way that the village can impose a fine on a property that's not rented for longer than six months?
Jeff can speak to that.
No. Well, that's an easy answer.
Sure answer now.
You can impose a fine if it comes to disrepair, or you know, something like that.
So, and that's a, what, is that a, is that a, is that a village law, is that a state law?
It's a property law, you can't take.
A property law, it's like Supreme Court level.
Yeah, it's, it's constitutional kind of stuff. You can't take property law just.
So as long as it's safe, it can stay uninhabited for years and years and years, okay?
And that's the right.
Yeah, I mean, you know, think about, what was, what was years ago, you guys? The Great Northern Pizza Kitchen, right?
Right.
Vacant for how many years?
Five.
Yeah. You can't, you know.
Right, those are my two things.
Okay, who else had member items?
I had two, one, I had just received communication from the public with regards to outdoor storage on properties, and specific to areas in the northeast, or the northern quadrant off Washington and Gulf. Just a question of, to what degree do we have in our code, and if Steve could maybe provide some comment at the next meeting as to the ability in our current code to ensure that we're not using front yards and driveways as storage, and to what degree we can do anything, if anything about it, that's the question of the resident, I don't know the answers, I don't know if we should or shouldn't.
There is something in our code, and Jeff, you could probably speak to it, and I know Steve can too, but there is something in our code, you can have temporary storage, that was my understanding. If you're under renovation.
I would have to.
In the front, I, I, because I remember talking about this with Steve quite a while back, why don't we get with Steve, and let's, let's get that information, okay? Yeah, yeah.
I would put this on Steve and, and just ask if, if somebody could ask him a little question.
I have the note.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
The other one is the bigger item, which is, have we made any progress on the long-term plan?
We have not, just to be honest, we tried to schedule a meeting, and then we got, everybody's been away, and that isn't heading to the little year in the summer, summer is difficult.
And this is internal?
Internal, we haven't had our meetings because we've been.
Like a special meeting?
No, it was, it was the committee.
Yeah.
It's a committee, the committee, we need to get the committee together. Okay.
We've had, unfortunately, or fortunately, so many projects going, finishing up with fire damage, getting all that done, so that is something that's on my list for this week, scheduling a meeting.
So, so here's just my thought. I, I need to see progress on this, because we need to get to Jeff the languages to how these reserves are gonna be structured, we need to get that work done, I want the long-term plan pretty darn close, I hope, to public, you know, presentation, you know, pretty close, within a six-month window, which is before the next time we come to a budget.
I think we all want that, and I think, I think when you sent out the notice for the meetings, some people couldn't make any of the dates. So, you know, let's, let's make sure we can all get together.
Even my participation in these meetings pales in comparison to the work that needs to be done internally.
Then why don't we just do that, why don't we, well, let's put a draft together, and we'll shoot it to you, how's that?
We'll keep the internal meeting together. It just felt hard.
We've already done it already, man.
Who's on, who's on the committee?
Dave, Dorothea, and me.
Yeah, but the next step is, so in the absence, in the absence of that opportunity to do it, or feeling that we have the capacity to do it and the time to do it, if it stalls, right, and that may be because of my commitments outside, right, it may be because of challenges inside. If you guys want to operate internally, and then just come and, you know, bring me in when you've got some.
A little bit faster.
But my thought is, is if we don't start to see some action, and I know there's all goodwill, and I'm not trying to like remove the fact that it's hard to get this done in the summertime, but because of the crunch that we're coming into, if we don't start seeing some progress, I think we need to hire it out.
Yeah, I don't think we need to do that.
No, I think we're closer than you think.
We've already.
This language, I think we had pretty much the language before, I think we just, we need to go back and add the different funds, reserves you were looking at adding at the budget time, and clarify our language.
I like.
We did a lot of work with the previous board.
I like the heels that are digging in the ground right now.
Yeah, no.
It's nice to hear that in response to the idea of putting this to bid, but, you know, we've got to get this done before the next budget.
How about I say this, okay, given catastrophic across the board, you know, the world. No fires, no nothing.
Okay.
By the second meeting in September, we'll have the language to the board.
Here we go.
So, language to the board for the reserves is different than the long-term plan?
That's gonna take a little longer, we need the board together, that's a total board commitment for the long-term plan.
Personally, I think as a board member, I need material before I can even come to the board for discussion.
And I wouldn't say the progress on the long-term plan is seized, because I think the DPW is restructuring and working on the charts that were concerned for those.
And sometimes the work on those charts isn't necessarily the work that they're most adept to do, suggesting again that, do we need?
Well, and I also have, I also have information, because I attended the multi-year planning with the state controllers, and I have their charts, which I'm going to take and look at and see if I can combine them both together, and I think that's something, you even showed at one point their charts, which is the standard charts, so.
And Danielle, Danielle's working on that.
Danielle has.
So then in the second meeting in September, can we see not just the language for the reserves, but that language and reserves is gonna have to be connected to the topical elements in the long-term plan, so you got A, B, C, D, I don't care if it's infrastructure or beautification, right, assets, so you connect the reserves, you got, okay, this is your reserve language, this is the long-term plan, we need to have enough information in that long-term plan so that we can actually be committed to the reserve language. If there's not enough depth to the long-term plan and what's inside of it and those costs, how we commit to those reserves is gonna pay off. So I guess where I'm at, I'm hearing a little bit of dig in, which is great, I mean, I commend you for that. But I, I think we need to get to a point within a month where there's a reason why, when I look at what is provided, I don't bring a motion forward to put a request out to bid for a consultant to come in and help. I think that's the timeliness, we got to get this done.
I, I understand your impatience, and this is in the realm of any board member's set at these tables prior to this or future, this has not been a priority for, since I've been here for 10 years.
I beg to differ.
I said. Okay, I understand, I'm not trying to, you know, there's been different views, but I said it hasn't been an overall priority.
I would agree with that.
Yeah. Let's see what we can get in a month, we can get closer, but give us a couple months before we spend money on a consultant that isn't necessary.
Let's see how far we're going.
I don't want to belabor this, I think you're raising a good point, I think we're all on the same page, I've been on this stage for two and a half years. I think we're all on the same page, let's get, let's push the ball forward as far as we can and bring it right back.
See, we have enough brain power on this board and in the staff that we can do this.
Plenty.
And I just, I don't want it to rush a product, I'd rather do it right, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right.
I want to get it done before the next budget period.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we start spinning wheels, then I think, you know what, now is time.
No, this is, this brings better, much better clarity to me about how we're gonna.
At least we have a date.
This definitely brings clarity to me.
To prove to us that we don't need to hire us.
Any other comments from?
There's nothing to prove, we're just gonna get it done.
We're gonna do.
Okay, so any other member item from you?
Just a couple over here.
I'm sorry. Boy! Okay, is this a PS?
I saved a moment.
Okay.
We had a request come to the office today for a bench, and I know that we had the discussion regarding no more benches. But again, when I met with trustee Coe on Main Street, and I pointed out an area to her that had always been intended for another bench, and so we do have a space, and that is in front of the bookstore, where one bench faces this way, and it would be an opportunity for them to face one another.
As a conversation.
In a conversation, and potentially maybe a table.
Right, maybe a little checker table.
Like a little mini car.
Yeah, like a little chess.
That's a chess.
Oh, let's do that.
So I might, there's two ways we can approach it, I can speak to the individual who called, will it try and see if they're interested in, because people usually are very specific about where they want their bench. The other is that there might be another person, business owner in the village who's interested in donating a bench, and they might be interested in that spot.
Great, great.
Absolutely.
So before I put out the word, there's no more.
Yeah, there's another one that.
Looking for the cost of the benches, we haven't established the cost in the.
Let's, let's meet together afterwards, because it could be the same person, you know.
Okay, yep, I just wanted to.
Okay, so I have a follow-up on, are you all set, Willie?
I'm done, thank you.
So, a follow-up on Dave's item, I mean, to me, this is incredibly important too, and I really need to, this is about how much money we need to pay for village expenses, and, you know, over more than a one-year budget cycle, and that's just absolutely essential information to be able to understand how we budget, right? And, and so I really need to see that in place too, I did speak with Zach Blair last week, I believe it was, and, and just to kind of underscore the importance of knowing how much we need to save, we were talking about the road conditions, and we had a previous meeting about the, the road conditions, and, you know, we've got a road inventory, and it says the surface condition of the different roads, and I had a question at that time, well, you know, why does this road say the surface condition is good? But that's one of the roads that we're working on, right, it just didn't really sync up for me. And, and when Zach gave an answer, it was clear that there was more that played into the equation. He shared a document with me from Cornell about the, the road conditions and how we understand and assess those.
Assess it, yeah.
And, and so, you know, basically, there are two different types of treatments, we can resurface or we can reconstruct completely. And one, one thing that came out of this discussion with the DPW superintendent Zach is, is that, you know, I asked him, how many of our village roads can we resurface versus how many need to be reconstructed completely? And he said they really all need to be reconstructed completely. And, and that was surprising to me, it's not in the street inventory spreadsheet that we have, it's not clear, because that only talks about surface condition, but, you know, most municipalities, the, the most that they spend is on roads and maintaining. because that only talks about surface condition, but, you know, most municipalities, the most that they spend is on roads and maintaining them. And so to me, this was concerning, that there's possibly a big liability in terms of, kind of an unpaid debt with the roads. That's a critical, that's probably the most important part of a multi-year capital plan, is how much we need to spend on roads.
Yes, infrastructure.
And so I guess, you know, so a couple of things here, it's concerning to me that I didn't have that visibility as a board member, you know, not blaming anyone or anything, I just, you know, I'd like to better understand what the road conditions are around the village, and I think we need to make that a part of our multi-year capital planning decisions. I think that given the magnitude of what we might be looking at with this rebuilding of all the roads, 15 miles worth of village-controlled roads that we have, Zach did talk to the town, and I guess they had helped in the past with inventorying the roads and figuring out the conditions, they haven't done that in a while. They said they might be able to help out in October, but one idea that I discussed with Zach is possibly just, we're working with GPI and basically the road engineering consultants, and we talked about possibly just asking them how much it would cost to help us reestablish a baseline of, you know, all the roads in the village and what kind of treatment they need, you know, resurfacing or rebuilding. He thought, I can't remember the exact figure, but I thought he said somewhere around under a couple thousand it might be. But my proposal is that we just ask them, since we've already got a contract with them, how much it would be to help us reestablish.
Scott Harder can also help us with that too, because he also, you know, I think between the two, so we can keep costs down.
We can certainly ask, I think it might be more in GPI, we'll have this far as road.
Well, at this point, they're doing a whole row, so I think it's probably good timing, really, with GPI.
So I just like, my proposal is we just ask them what the cost would be to help us to establish a baseline of road conditions.
Do you want to reach out to, let's reach out?
I, either I'll reach out or Zach will reach out.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, we need to.
We'll give that call for you to get us to the board for the next meeting.
That would be great, just, you know, because that's going to be central in multi-year capital.
No, that's, that's a good, great, very good. What else?
That's all.
I have a member item. We, I know, I haven't ever do, right? No, well, first, thanks to Dorothea for honchoing this renovation and the painting and the moving, and then moving it out and moving it back and the carpet, you know, you really stepped up, thank you very much. And also Alexandria was a great help as well.
She's fabulous.
So, anyway, so we're still kind of putting pieces back together, but we're kind of getting our look here. And we want to have an open house and let our residents know that, you know, our grand dom has gotten a little bit of a fresh face inside here, and so we were looking at, what was, what was the date again? Saturday, September 9th? I think it was.
Yes, September 9th. That's a rodeo.
Oh, it's a food truck rodeo, well.
But that might be good.
Might work.
It might work, actually.
Is there a reason here?
Yeah, so, because I just think it'd be a nice thing, you know, we can invite our friends from the town board.
Duck drop too.
You know, yeah, I mean, I just think, we'll just make this a little open house, and I do want to schedule though where we, I thought it'd be a nice time to do it, where we give the commendations to Officer Nick Mulvaney and to our fire department for saving our building. And now we have a nice little sort of fresh face.
When were you thinking, what time of the day?
What, what were we?
We were thinking like 10 to noon.
Like just a couple of hours and.
So the food truck starts at noon?
Yeah, so maybe right before then, you know.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Because the duck drops later anyway.
Duck drops at four.
Do 10 to 2 and walk over.
Yeah, just kind of, you know, blend it all in, you know.
10 to 2? No, can it open that long?
Oh, four hours, yikes.
Oh, no, 10 to 12.
10 to 12, yeah, cup of coffee, thanks, everybody.
I'm going to be more like 11 to 1, like span it, because then people are.
Span both.
We're not, you know, like, because if we're trying to get 10 to 12, people aren't going to come in at 10 and stay out for the food truck.
Oh, I see, oh, that's a good point, yeah, yeah, yeah.
People will come in.
About 11 to 1 then, yeah, that's nice, because then they're kind of in, getting in the groove.
Otherwise, it's a long day.
Good point, okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, but I just think it'd be a nice thing, and we'll be all, you know, fresh and fab here, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's my member item.
Well, thank you to the mayor for helping as well, she did a lot of dusting shelves along with me, so.
Slapping, moving boxes, okay, so, with that being said, I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing an employee matter. A second, we had a stereo.
I got Lily. I wrote Lisa and I got Lily. Trustee Lankin?
Aye.
Trustee Lankin?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So Susan, we're going into executive session, so, yeah, I know.
See you later, hey, good to see you.
Okay. I make a motion, we leave executive session.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lankin?
Leave executive session.
Yes.
Trustee Lankin?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Oh, no, wait, no, I do not.
Oh, I take that back, I make a motion, take that back.
Instead, I would like to make a motion to approve the hiring of our archivist receptionist of Laura Donk at $19 an hour, which is already in the budget. Do I have a second?
She has a start date of possibly Monday.
With a start date of possibly Monday.
Yeah, she's making sure she's arrangement with.
I will second that.
I suppose it's a Monday, or?
It's kind of an iffy motion.
We just don't want to hold.
Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, Trustee Lankin?
Aye.
Trustee Lankin?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes.